I know. Wow. All right, we're ready to get started. Today's Tuesday, October 22, 2024. This is a combined special council meeting and work session, calling this meeting to order and giving notice to the public and to the city council that we may recess to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call? Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Asland?
President.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would please stand if you're able.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, we're moving down to proclamations. The first one is for National Homeless Awareness Month, so anyone who's in the audience here for this, please come down and join us. And then the second is for Native American Heritage Month. Yeah, you stand wherever you would like, in this general area, and then after we take a photo, I will invite whomever you would like to come up and say a few words. The Flagstaff community has always banded together to meet the needs of our citizens and community. Awareness, generosity, and the determination to find solutions to community problems are traits that have long kept our city strong. Prevention of homelessness is a complex challenge that faces us today. Although estimates of the exact number of homeless vary, innovative approaches to this problem by all elements of our society are needed. The City of Flagstaff would like to recognize our federal, state, and local partners, national service organizations, corporations, churches, synagogues, and voluntary groups who, over the years, have worked together to provide food, shelter, and comfort for the needy. The struggle to fulfill basic needs can be difficult for many people who live paycheck to paycheck. An illness, injury, or job loss can easily lead to poverty, hunger, and homelessness. Data shows that about 43 million Americans live below the poverty line, and one in five children is afflicted by poverty, and more than 650,000 people are estimated to be homeless, the most since the country began using the yearly point-in-time survey in 2007. Now therefore I, Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as National Homeless Awareness Month, and call upon our community to come together in partnership and resolve to invigorate their commitment to reach out to their fellow Americans in need.
Hi, my name is Ross Schaefer, and I am the Executive Director of Flagstaff Shelter Services. I am here this afternoon with each of you, one, to express my gratitude to the City of Flagstaff and to our mayor and council for recognizing this important work that is happening for so many people that are in crisis in our community. Currently, we have 879 people on the by-name list in our community experiencing homelessness. That number fluctuates week to week, to be honest with you. It's not always the most accurate data to capture because of the nature of the movement that our folks are experiencing, but what we know is that there are far, far, far too many folks that cannot find suitable housing for themselves and their families in our community, and I'm proud to work aside many of these folks, many partners that aren't in the room right now in the pursuit of ending homelessness in our community. I truly believe that we can get to a place where folks are not experiencing lengthy stays in our system. I don't know that we'll ever get to a place where we don't need access to an emergency resource for people, but I do think we can get somewhere where people can get in and out of the system as quickly as possible, and with your support and this proclamation, I believe that we have it in us. So, thank you.
Yes. Rose, come on down. Oops, promise to do better this time. I'm not sick, and I'm not on cold medicine, so let's see. This, I'm very proud to read tonight, is the City of Flagstaff's proclamation for the Native American Month, Heritage Month. The United States of America was founded with the cognizance that all of us are created equal and deserve equal treatment, equal dignity, and equal opportunity. However, the promise of our nation has been denied to indigenous people who have lived on this land since time immemorial. Despite a painful history made clear by unjust federal policies of assimilation and termination, indigenous people have persevered and claimed resiliency. During this month, the City of Flagstaff celebrates the mirrored contributions of indigenous peoples past and present, honor the influence they have had on the advancement of our community and nation, and recommit ourselves to upholding trust and responsibilities, strengthening our relationships, and advancing native self-determination. Approximately 12% of the citizens in the City of Flagstaff are members of indigenous nations, in addition to the 14 local nations who hold this land and bordering mountains as sacred. Northern Arizona University and Coconino Community College serve students who are representative of over 100 indigenous nations. We also include contributions of our non-human relatives, the animals, those who fly, swim, and the Standing Green Nation. We also need to take time to honor indigenous veterans and service members who selfishly continue to serve in our military, including the brave Native American code talkers in World War I and in World War II. For over two centuries, Native Americans have defended our country during every major conflict and continue to serve at a high rate than any other ethnic group in the nation because their roots are deeply enriched in this land. The Flagstaff City Council established the Indigenous Commission to advise the city council on issues and methods in promoting diversity, equity, and inclusive planning with indigenous perspective within the City of Flagstaff, and the Indigenous Commission supports the designation of the month of November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month in unison with all local, indigenous, state, and national observances. Now therefore, on behalf of Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, I do hereby proclaim November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month, and encourage our community to learn about and appreciate the history, heritage, and contributions of Native American as indigenous peoples of this great land.
Thank you, relatives that are here today. I really appreciate this time to come before you and just enjoy your smiling faces and your involvement in the city. Also want to express gratitude to our indigenous commissioners here and our future indigenous commissioners from the high schools. Yay. As well as maybe they might become mayors and council people. So, I appreciate them being here and being involved. We're still a little bit early in getting an event together for Native American Heritage Month, but we always plan together with others like NAU as well as the county, so please be on the lookout for some things to share in the next few weeks as we roll out our calendar. And then also, there's, I just want to say publicly that I have a request to Mr. Sterling, so I won't say what. Anyway, he knows what it is, and so anyways, thank you for being here, and again, thank
This is where members of the public can address the council about items that are not on the prepared agenda, and you have three minutes.
you, relatives, for being here with us as well.
There's a clock right here, and during open call to the public, the council doesn't respond
Yeah.
or ask questions, but if you have a request, we can ask staff to follow up with you. So, Elsa Erling.
Hello, my name is Elsa Erling. I'm the Associate Planner in Comprehensive Planning for the City, and I'm happy to announce that the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan is available for a 60-day public review at the website www dot flagstaff dot az dot gov slash regional plan 2045. As you know, the city and county both contribute to and adopt this plan for Flagstaff and for the surrounding communities of Doni Park, Timberline, Fernwood, Kachina, Mountaineer, Belmont, and Fort Valley. Commenting in the next 60 days will guide what is placed on next year's November 2025 ballot. There are several different ways to participate between now and December 19. We held an opening webinar on October 21 and have posted the video to the city's YouTube page for those that missed it. There will be a closing webinar on December 4. You can participate in a topical plan workshop between November 13 to 18. At these workshops, we will provide a presentation and collaborative activities to gather feedback. If you'd like more of a one-on-one opportunity to meet with staff, you can join us for office hours. At these events, we will have a conversation about whatever aspects of the plan you would like to discuss. You can post your comments on the Conveo website, which is hosted by the county. This allows you to put comments and pins on the document and maps and respond to each other's feedback. You can also send a comment letter to the project contacts, and you can invite planners to a meeting that you are hosting for an organization or group. As we are engaged in this significant project milestone, we want to thank the members of the Regional Plan Committee for all their hard work in reviewing the draft plan over 15 meetings and for their consistent preparation and open communication. Thank you to the city council, the Board of Supervisors, and the Planning and Zoning Commissions for their continued support in reaching out to the community and support for this process. We look forward to working with you at the plan retreat in the spring and reporting on the feedback from the 60-day review. Thank you.
Melissa Schatzkiewicz?
Yeah, good luck. A good Polish name, Schalkiewicz.
Oh, the other one.
Oh, thank you. Schalkiewicz, yeah, thank you.
Can you say it one more time?
Sure, Schalkiewicz.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And good evening, afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I'm grateful to have an opportunity to really continue a discussion that I think is six years old or more about the beautification of the South Side and the noise ordinance. I appreciate all you've done thus far and the work that you do, not only for the South Side, but all of Flagstaff. I have never walked in your shoes, and I have no idea what it's like to do the work you do, but I have walked in my shoes, these shoes, and I've walked on the South Side, San Francisco Street, almost daily since 2008. I started as an employee at Northern Arizona Yoga Center, and it's not a plug for my business, and then I proceeded to buy the business, to buy the building, and I've even lived on top of that studio during COVID in times where money was scarce for all of us. I've also had the joy of sitting on the front porch of the historic building that I own and hear the stories of my neighbors, my neighbors that have lived in the building that I currently own with my partner, John Doskus, my work partner. And these stories, I feel like have helped me better understand the community, and I'm grateful that you put a pause on the noise ordinance last session to better understand the zoning, and I can't say that I do, but I feel like I am beginning to know the oral history and, again, my neighbors that haven't lived there, that have lived there now but in the past. And some of the stories I've heard might explain this unique zoning in that the matriarch of the McGonaght family passed away within the last couple of years, and I heard the story about the patriarch of the McGonaght family that worked at the sawmill, and he was given the lumber to build his home so he could work at the sawmill so his family could be near his work, and I think that that is part of this community, and it's important. I don't have the time to fully go into it, but I had a sensory attack. I donated $2,000 for my business to put this mural up, and Chip Thomas was there Sunday morning to show our community this beautiful mural, and our former mayor, Coral Evans, and this is what our community's seeing, and the sound is another issue. It's also an assault on our senses, and I want to work with you, and I thank you for everything that you've done. I look forward to our future together. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexander Schenkin?
Thank you, members of the city council, and thank you for the opportunity to update you on Flow, F-L-O-E, an innovative company born here in Flagstaff with support from the Innovate Waste Prize. I'm Alexander Schenkin, and Assistant Research Professor here at NAU and CEO of Flow. We're excited to share our mission to transform the global HVAC industry by making it more affordable, radically accessible, and significantly reducing carbon footprints, starting right here in Flag. I'm thrilled to announce we won first place in the Ten Across Cooling Challenge last April, securing $150,000, $50,000 of which goes to Habitat for Humanity of Northern Arizona to participate in the installation of Flow's smart fan in their Timber Sky Starter Homes. So, we're very excited about that. In addition, we've secured $30,000 from Ten Across to produce a documentary chronicling Flow's development from zero to hopefully hero. We're also seeking matching funds to enhance that project. Either way, we think it's going to be an incredible PR opportunity to showcase Flagstaff's innovation on a national stage. Our smart fan technology automates the use of outside air to heat or cool homes almost for free. Basically, it's super simple. All it does is emulate what you do anyway, open your doors and windows in the morning and the summer to cool things down, or in the shoulder seasons to heat your home up, but just in an automated and optimized way, therefore reducing grid strain and reducing costs and reducing carbon emissions. So, our progress has been significant. Got AWD law on board, so local law form, to help us get incorporated as a Delaware C Corp registered here in Arizona, and Flagstaff provisional patent filed. We'll have a full patent filed end of November 2024, and we've conducted international name searches with them. We've engaged local talent, had NAU master's student do computational fluid dynamics modeling to make sure that it's going to work in the starter homes, and we're engaging with FUSD who struggle with keeping their schools cool or hot, so we're happy to meet with them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dennis Givens?
Thank you, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor, city council, citizens, city staff. My name is Dennis Givens, freedom fighter and member of the South Side, and I just want to give a shout out to Melissa. She actually owns the building where Morning Glory's in, and she's an awesome renter. She's cool. Without her, we wouldn't have Morning Glory. The scenario is, I'm here to speak on behalf of my friend Peach, who is autistic, and she wanted me to come up here and just talk about what she had to say to the city council. She told me that there should be more resources for mental health and people with disabilities, more positive awareness for people with disabilities, less stigma and discrimination, and affordable housing is a really big thing for people with barriers, more community spaces for people to hang out and do their hobbies. People with disabilities need jobs, and they can't do the physical ones, so maybe more jobs where they can use their exceptional brain power. People with disabilities can thrive with more acceptance and inclusion. The more acceptance, the better for all of us. She also talked about better sidewalks and snow removal for people in wheelchairs and having other problems walking around. She wants the buses to run later and more frequencies. Paratransit's been pretty good, but it could be better, as we talked about maybe a few council members or city council meetings earlier. Section 8 can be closer to downtown, more apartments that accept Section 8 vouchers, more respect for native people. Human trafficking was a big concern for her, especially among the indigenous population, and she wants the buses to be safe because she is afraid that people can get snatched up on the buses. She wants also people to speak up against snowball, better recycling, more green spaces and more parks, more services for homeless, and it shouldn't have to include a religious background to be accepted, and more treatment for people on substances, and that's what she had to say for you all today, and it was really beautiful to talk to her, and yeah, it's really cool that people are speaking their minds. And I'm also hosting a party at Bushmaster Park on Sunday to celebrate democracy. It's at 5:30. Bring your food, and let's get out the vote, people. Thanks a lot for having me, and let's go us.
Thank you, Dennis. Shannon Anderson?
Shannon Anderson with the City of Flagstaff. I am one of the deputy city managers. I have a treat to share with you. It's really a shout out to one of our fellow staff members, Heidi Hansen. She received the Joe and Marie Rowley Spirit of NAU Award this last Friday, and that award is presented to an alumna who radiates the spirit of NAU. When they consider the various nominees, they look at who exemplifies the lumberjack spirit, the words or phrases that others use to describe them, and how the nominee demonstrates NAU spirit throughout their life. Heidi Hansen, as you can see in this write-up here, was recognized for the work that she does on our behalf here in local government, as our Economic Vitality Director and as the previous interim deputy city manager, also the numerous other organizations she serves, like Northern Arizona Healthcare and the Tourism Advisory Council, and the support she provides to NAU through their Alumni Association Board, their Foundation Board, and the Flagstaff Alumni Chapter. It was a wonderful opportunity to be able to share this recognition with Heidi, and I wanted to be sure that you, as well as our community, were aware of her recognition and the great work that she does on behalf of our community.
Thank you, and congratulations, Heidi.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shannon.
Next up, we have liquor licenses. Let me get down to here. We have two liquor licenses, and we can consider both under one public hearing and act upon both by one motion unless council requests otherwise. So, first up, I am going to open the public hearing, and do we have staff here for a presentation?
Yes, Mayor. We have Sergeant Almendares. He's actually online today.
Wonderful. All right, Sergeant?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Nick Almendares, Sergeant with the Flagstaff Police Department. For you today to present a new liquor license application. This is for a Series 5 government liquor license at Roll Activity Center, which is located at 304 East Pineal Drive here in Flagstaff, Arizona. The application was filed by Christopher Mark Wilkie, who is the controlling person. And in my investigation, I discovered no derogatory records on the applicant and no current or historical liquor violations. I found evidence he has taken the mandatory liquor license application or training. He was invited to answer any questions here today.
Council, do you have any questions about this application? Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Sergeant, I know that we have rules against liquor establishments being near schools. Does that only apply to, like, grade schools and high schools and not apply to universities?
Councilmember McCarthy, that's correct.
Next up, we have liquor licenses. Let me get down to here. We have two liquor licenses. And we can consider both under one public hearing and act upon both by one motion unless council requests otherwise. So first up, I am going to open the public hearing. And do we have staff here for a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, we have Sergeant Almendares. He's actually online today.
Wonderful. All right, Sergeant?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Nick Almendares, Sergeant with the Flagstaff Police Department. For you today to present a new liquor license application. This is for a Series Five Government Liquor License at Roll Activity Center, which is located at 304 East Pineal Drive here in Flagstaff, Arizona. The application was filed by Christopher Mark Wilkie, who is the controlling person. And in my investigation, I discovered no derogatory records on the applicant and no current or historical liquor violations. I found evidence he has taken the mandatory liquor license application for trading. He was invited to answer any questions here today.
Counsel, do you have any questions about this application? Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Sergeant, I know that we have rules against liquor establishments being near schools. Does that only apply to like grade schools and high schools and not apply to universities?
Councilmember McCarthy, that's correct. It applies through grades K through 12.
Thank you.
Okay, Sergeant, go ahead with the other presentation.
Okay, moving on, the next liquor license application is for a Series Five Government Liquor License. And that's at the Lumberjack Stadium, which is located at 824 South San Francisco Street here in Flagstaff, Arizona. This application was filed by Christopher Mark Wilkie, who is the controlling person. And in my investigation, I discovered no derogatory records on the applicant and no current or historical liquor violations. I found evidence he has taken the mandatory liquor license training. He was also, well, he's invited to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions on this application? All right. And I see no public comment.
Correct.
So I'm going to close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been on council eight years now and seen a lot of liquor applications. I've only voted against the recommendation of approval twice. But I'm not going to support this. Somehow, I don't think that it's appropriate to have liquor served on the campus.
Is there a second for that motion?
Madam Mayor, I don't know that that was a motion more a statement. Is that correct, Councilmember McCarthy?
Yeah, I did not make a motion, but I'll make one now. And you can yea it or nay it. I move that we send these two applications to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation for denial.
Is there a second? All right, motion fails. Do we have a motion to forward with recommendation for approval?
I'll move to forward to the State Liquor License for a recommendation of approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? A and B. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries. I am adjourning the special meeting and calling to order the work session, giving the same notice that we may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Item number two, former courthouse redevelopment discussion.
Mayor, Council, I'd like to preface the discussion with just a quick comment or two about how we got here. This council may recall that prior to your summer recess, we had a discussion on this matter. The issue, or not issue, but the project in front of us tonight has actually been on the planning table internally for some time as we discussed a procedure to follow that would open this up for a competitive process and bring it back to the dais. And that is where we are tonight. Council gave us some direction before the recess as to certain items within the procurement process that you would like to see emphasized. And we took that direction and did a competitive procurement process. And then staff, a number of staff worked pretty hard over the summer months coming up to tonight's date to put together a presentation for you and discuss the outcomes of that procurement process. I want to thank all the staff who's been involved in this. It's, it's been a very, a very rewarding project thus far just in terms of the, the topic that's on the table and something that we're all excited about. And with that, I'll turn it over to staff for their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Mayor, Council, Michelle McNulty, Planning Director for the City of Flagstaff. With me this evening is David McIntyre, Community Investment Director, and a whole host of other people. As City Manager just mentioned, there's been a big team working on this. So we have several people available for any questions, as well as the respondent is here as well. So just to kind of reorient where the vicinity map. And so you can see the two, the parcels that are highlighted. That's what the request for proposals originally went to, to, went out to bid for, went out to proposal. I'm going to echo a few things that Greg just said. But in January of 2024, the Flagstaff City Council supported the Downtown Vision and Action Plan, which was completed by the Flagstaff Downtown Business Association in partnership with the city, Coquinino County, and Mountain Line. The plan identified several catalytic sites, including the entire block, housing the formal, former courthouse site, and called for the city to put out a request for proposals or an RFP for the redevelopment of the property. The city could only put out an RFP for the city-owned parcels, which we knew couldn't fit everything that was programmed for the site in the Vision and Action Plan. So prior to issuing the RFP, as City Manager mentioned, staff provided an update to council on what would be included and sought your feedback prior to finalizing the proposal. Council supported being flexible in the RFP, but made, made it clear any response should be in general alignment with the city's regional plan, tenure housing plan, and the carbon neutrality plan. An RFP was issued and originally ran from April 12th through June 11th, 2020, 2024. A two-week extension was granted based on questions and comments received from interested parties. And the response period ultimately, ultimately closed June 25th, 2024. One response was received and appears to include many of the attributes identified in the Downtown Vision and Action Plan, such as a grocery store and residential units to really support us moving towards a livable, activated, and walkable downtown. And it also addresses city housing and carbon neutrality priorities. So in addition to providing a response that included the city-owned property, they also included properties that they also control. So under Sierra Trigo. So those are the, the parcels that are highlighted. And then just a reminder that the parking lot, the corner of Aspen and Beaver, and then the two parcels that are at Beaver and 66 were the city-owned. So that's the entirety of the response. With that, just to give a general outline of what they proposed, the first level would include retail, restaurant, grocery, protected bicycle parking, and about 50 parking spaces. Levels two and three would be parking decks with a total of 265 spaces, giving the entire project 315 spaces they would bring online, with 15 of those being dedicated to Park Flag. Levels four through seven include residential and hotel guest rooms. There's approximately 80 residential units entirely separate than the hotel space. And it's a mix of mostly studio and one bedrooms with some larger units with multiple bedrooms. Overall, it has about 150 hotel guest rooms. Level six could include conference and event space. And the respondent also proposed a purchase price of $2 million. So we wanted to bring to you kind of what does this look like from the conceptual elevations. As you can see, the first five floors are kind of at the traditional setback. Levels six and seven are setback per code. I think it's about 10 to 15 feet. So that's level six and seven that you see setback. This would be at the corner of Humphreys and Aspen Avenue. This would be the view from the corner of Beaver Street and Aspen Avenue with a variety of breaks and material changes to break up the form and the massing of the building. And then the view from the corner of West 66 and Beaver Street. So we're here tonight to seek some input from you as we move forward with negotiations. Really, we're having a conversation about mass and scale and then parking density and money. So we always joke that Flagstaff, we always say we want everything. We have a proposal that pretty much gives us everything that we wanted. But we really want to have a conversation about what that looks like. And does the benefit of what we get with the mass and scale work for you? And if it does, then we know how to proceed with our negotiations. Otherwise, we would like to seek some guidance on you all of what, how we should continue. I do want to note that as it's built, there is a chance that a portion of the alley could be vacated. So the alley that's kind of between Aspen and Route 66 could be vacated. It, it may not because the building could be built over it. They've provided a very nice east-west pedestrian connection that could be under private control or it could be retained as an alley. And it would still be wonderful civic space and then also leaving room for it to be serviced because there is a water line in there. There could be future conversations about also relocating that water line as well. So we just want to bring that to your attention to make sure that that is something that would be something that you, that the council would consider. We do have goals and policies in our regional plan and in our high occupancy housing plan that state that we shouldn't abandon alleys. And the reason for that is because we really want to break up that, that massing. And we want to allow for alleyways to be used as pedestrian connections. It is a policy, it's not code. I would also say that there's ways that, you know, if we know that that's why we have that in our policies, we can work with the applicant to break up the scale and massing that would help with, you know, why we ask people to, to keep those alleys in the first place. And as well, they are providing a rerouting that would get people from, instead of ending at that terminus where that alley doesn't, up to either Aspen or Route 66 and getting them on a sidewalk that's actually controlled by an intersection light, which is actually better than just having people come out to a mid-stop block as it currently dumps you out. So there, there are some benefits in rerouting that could be done. So I'm going to stop there. And why don't we have a conversation about the alley? I'd like to get your thoughts on that.
And you don't have any sketches?
I don't of the floor plan that I can bring up. We wanted to be respectful that this, a lot of this is proprietary information. And because of the conversation being about massing, we really wanted to see that. So I do apologize that I don't have a better sketching of the site plans so that you could see what I'm talking about.
Okay. Councilmember Sweet, did you, and then Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So in general, I'm, I'm always supportive of utilizing our alleyways for activation. However, I did go and I walked the alley that we're talking about today. And it, it is, I see that there's a better way to do it. And to drop the pedestrian off at a different point, I think would be beneficial. So in this case, I am, I'm good with moving forward with, if we do lose the alleyway. And if we have a route to put the pedestrian, then I'm good.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Hey, Michelle, how tall is this compared to the Residence Inn?
So I think the Residence Inn is five stories? Four. It's four stories, so it'd be about three stories taller.
I don't really have an opinion on the alleyway.
Okay. Was this a, Councilmember Matthews, and then Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to continue that question, so it would be seven stories?
It would be seven stories as proposed, yes.
And that's within our code?
It is. I won't get too much into the zoning specifics, but it could be, because they could go under conventional zoning or they could elect into a transect zone. But it could either be allowed by right or through a conditional use permit. But yes, it is allowed by code. We just have a requirement that after the fifth story, that you have to set back each additional story, which helps with the view sheds as well as without overshadowing other buildings. So actually, when you look, let me go back. So you're actually not even seeing both stories. You don't even see the sixth story and that top, you're kind of seeing that seventh.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. My questions are actually quite similar to Councilmember Matthews. What is the allowable height per zoning in this area? I know that the hotel, the Marriott, is not as high as it could be under the existing code. So I'm curious to know how high this building will be under the preliminary plans and then what the allowable height is. Thank you.
So I believe it's allowed up to 50 feet by right and then 70. Well, I think it could actually up to any height with a conditional use permit. So it would be, they're proposing seven stories. So probably just over 70 some feet. I'd have to refer to the respondent to know kind of if he knows what that height is. And then also on the Marriott, which is four stories. Shane, are you able to speak to what the height of those buildings are?
Want me to address it now?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's good to be with you today. I'm Shane Shumway. I'm the managing partner of Sierra Trigo and president of Whiting Brothers Investment Company. I wanted to just give a brief background of our company, if I may, just real quick. We've been doing business in Arizona for five generations now, including here in Flagstaff. We originally got our start in the sawmill business. And that included Flagstaff and New Mexico and eastern, eastern Arizona, the White Mountain area. After that, we got involved in both retail and hospitality development, including developing hotels along Route 66. We had a hotel under the, or motel under the Whiting Brothers' name here on, on Route 66. So we're excited about this project, excited to be working with the city again. We employ approximately 50 individuals here in Flagstaff, three of whom are here, Scott, Misty, and Mark. So they're here with us tonight. So to answer your question, so the transect zone, part of the code, allows for seven stories in height. Within the transect zone, we're within the height limitation according to my understanding of the transect zone and the seven stories allowed. And to answer your question, with respect to this rendering, the height of the building is 87 feet. And I believe the height of the Residence Inn is 55 feet. And I'm happy to answer more questions as they come.
Thank you. Counsel, thoughts on the alley? Councilmember Matthews?
Michelle, can you go back to that sketch where it showed the lots? Can you point out where the alley is that we're talking about?
Yes, it's right, can you see the cursor? It's right there. So, and thank you, because, so what it would do is it would still allow people to walk, keep this alley from Beaver Street to the, about the midpoint of that block, and then reroute them up to Aspen.
And then by abandoning the rest of the alley, then the, the building would overhang? Or would it physically be in that alleyway?
It would overhang. It's an opening and it's actually, what they propose would be a very nice kind of civic space. That would be still an outdoor area that people either using the hotel, the restaurants, the grocery store, and I think the general public, it would be there. What they would be required to provide is their civic space.
So you could still walk through?
You could, yeah.
Okay.
But it would have a bill, it's just it, it wouldn't be open air because it would have that hanging over it.
Okay. Councilmember McCarthy, and then Councilmember House?
I'm okay with the proposal on the alley. You know, converting it from true alley to like a civic space. And if we could get a grocery store down there, that would be great.
And I, and I do want to be clear, we're not sure that the alley even needs to be vacated. We're, we're exploring that with the proposal. But knowing that it is a potential, we wanted to just make sure that you all were aware of that and that it would, would have an overhang. So thank you for your feedback on that.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm also.
Yeah, I'm also okay with that. I just wanted to circle back to a comment that you made about the utility in that alley. Is there risk of loss of utility there, or what was that concern?
It's not a concern, it was mostly just a statement that if they did vacate the alley, they would have to relocate that. So it wouldn't be a loss of service, but they would have to relocate it. And that might be one of the reasons why, if we don't have to abandon it, that we just keep that and the water line in place, and then just making sure that, however it's designed, it could still be served for maintenance.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you repeat what you said about the 300 and, or 265 parking spaces? You said that that would be turned over to our, the city's parking?
No, so there'll be 265 parking spaces within the two parking decks on levels two and three. 50 parking spaces would be provided on the first, the ground floor, for a total of 315 parking spaces. 15 of those would be turned over to Park Flag.
So the rest is for residence and retail?
That's correct.
And I'm asking this because we sold this property to the public, not we, I wasn't here, that we would get out of this, paying for parking, more parking spaces down here. So now you're saying we get 15?
With this design, yes. And that's part of the conversation, so, and I think Dave McIntyre can probably get up and speak to any questions about the parking, but, so if we are not happy with only receiving 15, then we need to talk about what that means for this development. So if we're going to ask the respondent to provide more than 15, we would want to have a number, and that could result in the loss of residential units. It could result in the loss of floors of the development, which then could make certain things and amenities with this development uncertain. So what the input we're going to be seeking from you all is, what are the priorities as we negotiate that we should be negotiating for? And if it is for more parking, then we will do that, but then we need to understand then kind of what is the trade-off for that, and what would, of those trade-offs, where would be your priorities, that priorities that we really push for, that we, we are like, okay, we don't need that instead of this?
So maybe Dave or the developer can talk about the need for 300 spaces for the development. Again, I go back to what we tell the public, and then what we end up doing later down the road, and I don't feel comfortable doing that. People bought into, not that we had a choice, but it was a little bit more acceptable to convert to paid parking, because it was all to go to, you know, a parking structure so people could get downtown and stuff. And so now here we are, leveling off the old courthouse lot and getting, I don't think anybody envisioned 15.
Before we take up the parking, can we close out on the alley? I didn't hear any disagreement with the alley. We're all okay.
Good on the alley.
Okay, and then when you're finished, Dave, then Councilmember Harris has a question or a comment.
So we've had a lot of conversations with Sierra Trigo about the parking. That has been one of the areas where I think we had hoped there would be more public parking available. However, it does, it does get impacted significantly by the number of uses. I think we're all very pleased to see 80 residential, we're all very pleased to see the grocery store, and those require significant parking. Sierra Trigo's been very kind, and we'll have them, Shane, if he wants to come up and chat as well, that'd be great. They've been working on additional designs that could increase the number of parking units that would be provided to Park Flag. As Michelle stated, we don't have exact numbers of what that trade-off would be, but for instance, if we added in another parking deck, it would, it would reduce the number of units or the number of hotel rooms significantly in order to do that. And so then we're trading off the housing, we're trading off the hotel rooms. If we make it a less, a less financially viable project, then there's a potential for a reduction in the amount that they could afford to pay the city. So there would be some significant trade-offs potentially there. We are interested in the council's guidance on that. If the parking is more critical, then we will work with them in those negotiations to potentially reduce some of those numbers of units, in which case the mass and the scale matter significantly in terms of what we can do within that space. If, I will also say Park Flag is consistently and constantly looking for other ways to get parking into the downtown, and we do continue to try to find those options. This was an option that we were hoping to take advantage of, and there would be some parking. We're obviously also working to try to identify other locations where we can put it. So it's not that this is the end of the desire to put parking into the downtown, or that 15 addresses the commitment of the city to provide parking to the downtown. But it is just something I wanted to put out there, that we will be looking for those other opportunities as well. Shane, did you want to speak anything to what kinds of trade-offs those would be, or are we not ready quite for that?
I'm happy to speak to it.
Come on, please.
And if you could give us a guesstimate on the number of living units and the number of hotel units?
If the parking changes?
No, from what you're proposing right now.
Okay. So the number of apartments, multifamily units, is approximately 80 right now. That's predominantly studios and one bedrooms, with a few two bedrooms mixed into that. And again, these are approximate numbers based on current design. On the hotel side, it's approximately 150 guest rooms, as you know, hotel rooms have a smaller footprint, so approximately 150 there. To the question of parking, parking is a tough nut to crack on, on almost anything, and the, what we have to do is, we have to still provide parking for the Residence Inn across the way, provide parking for the potential grocery tenants, and also provide parking for, you know, individuals renting the apartments and new hotel guests. And so with that much demand for parking, 315 meets our demand plus 15 left over. With respect to parking, I think my perspective is, is that what I think downtown is looking for is, at least the businesses in downtown, are customers that create demand for the businesses. And a parking space, in a sense, does that, but in my view, amenities that draw people downtown and create a better source of customer demand is better done through individuals living here, visitors coming to downtown, and people coming to use retail and grocery stores. In terms of capability to increase the number of parking for the city and decrease other things, basically what that means is, we would be lowering the number of multifamily units and potentially hotel units, and also looking to the city to say, okay, the land is not necessarily worth what we proposed. And again, we may need to tap into the lockbox of the parking funds that have been accruing since creating paid parking downtown. Did I answer the question, or not?
Yes, thank you, Shane. And just to be clear, I'm, I think your concept is great. This is what we're wanting downtown, is to bring in, you know, more density and, you know, housing and hotel. I just also want to honor what we in the city tell our community we're going to do, and then when we don't do it, then that's the rebuttal that I have. And I know that several on council are probably happy not to have any parking, but it's still, to me, it's about honoring what we say so people trust us in the future and going on. So I'm just having a little bit of an edge with it, but conceptionally, what you're doing, I'm a little, I'm not sure about the height, but I like, you know, I want to start seeing residential downtown. You know, that's part of our downtown revisit, uh, re-
Vision plan.
Thank you, revision. So I'm just struggling with that a little bit, and if we could squeeze out some other, you know, I was trying to, you know, looking at the math on 80 units plus 150 guest rooms. I see where you're maxing at that, you know, 300, but again, you know, I hear that on the street a lot, that we change our minds a lot to fit our mood for the day, so that's all.
Councilmember Harris, and then City Manager.
Good point, Councilmember Matthews. But to that, I'm, did I hear you say that the 15 spaces were going to be free? Now, that's what I thought I heard, but that's incorrect, correct? So that means that those 15 spaces would be paid?
Correct.
People would have to pay for those spaces, correct?
Those would be managed by Park Flag as, as probably Employee North and Pay to Park.
Okay, but it's still paid, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
My pleasure.
Then my next comment would be, and please take this as point of affirmation, so when you bring stuff to us, and if it was voted on, could you also include the language that we told the voters, so that we could make, so that we could have that discussion? Because to be honest, I don't remember what language was in that. I remember when we did it, but I don't remember what language. So it would be really, really helpful to have that language, so that we would all kind of be on the same page.
Noted, and thank you. I know we did not use specific numbers when we brought it to council those months ago. There have been previous conversations that had numbers more involved, but, and when we came in, we talked at a very high level. I don't have the exact language with me, and I apologize for that.
But we told them that we would have parking, correct?
What, the guidance we received from council was that there would be, parking would be a part of the request for proposals, and something that had to be provided, and they have provided, 15. It is not, but we did not require a specific number in the RFP.
I'll, I'll deal with this later. Okay, thank you.
City Manager, and then Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We knew that the parking discussion would be a central discussion to all of this. The city has every intent of honoring what was represented to the voters when that ballot measure was advanced. The representation was made in the publicity pamphlet that accompanied that ballot measure, and not in the ballot measure itself, but nevertheless, it's our intent to honor that. What changed between the time that pamphlet was published and the vote was that the project was no longer one predicated upon both the city and the county joining forces and creating a single courthouse. That went away, and the city has, of course, gone, gone in its own direction. But the previous council, after some discussion, and certainly we agree with this at the staff level, made it clear that that representation would be honored. It was not stated that it would occur in one place, however, and the downtown vision plan, which is not a formal adoption of this council, but it was agreed to by the council in concept, speaks clearly, clearly to that point, that the parking was not, pardon me, envisioned to be in a centralized location anywhere, but rather dispersed throughout the downtown area, preferably in satellite locations, or if it is in a structure, to be part of or integrated with many other uses, and that's what this project certainly contemplates. But I just, I just wanted to make the point that, one, yes, there was a reference in that publicity pamphlet, the city is honoring that. We have not expended any dollars out of the lockbox revenues. We continue to build that fund. We are working in, as Dave alluded to, many other areas and locations for parking, including what has been described as the Foundation for Senior Living, other satellite areas we're always looking. But we do have every intent of honoring that commitment to the downtown businesses. The last comment I'll make is, we're not here to advocate what that number is. We're here to invite the discussion as to what that number might look like. I know we do have Downtown Business Alliance personnel with us. Hunter is here, and he can comment on this. This has garnered a lot of discussion with the downtown businesses, but what that number is, is something we need to chat about. And there, as Dave and Michelle both pointed out, and as Shane Shumway pointed out, the applicant, there's going to be trade-offs. Whatever the arrived number is, will necessitate some trade-offs, and so it's a good discussion, and we welcome council's input. Thank you.
Councilmember House, then Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. Can you let me know what the parking standard is in code for residential?
Sorry, I should know that off the top of my head. I believe it's about one and a half, and I, again, we're, it was unclear to me whether they were going under conventional zoning or transect, and so I believe it's about one and a half. Shane, are you able to say for sure what parking calculation you were using? And sorry, when I say one and a half, it's one parking space for, I think, 1.5 units, so, or 1.5 parking spaces per unit, sorry.
I can't answer your question with respect to code, because I don't know exactly what the number is. In terms of what we're using for our demand, it's one-to-one, so one spot for each apartment, and we feel on our side that's sufficient.
Okay, thank you. That was relatively what I was thinking too, so I think you're right on there. I had, was just penciling it out for 1.5 spaces for that residential, which would be about, what is that, 160 spaces for the, or 120 spaces for the residential, plus 150 for the hotel, plus about 50 for the retail. And the reason that I'm looking at that is because I'm also looking at some of the, somewhat back to the point that Councilmember Matthews was making, the different values and considerations and needs that have been expressed by our community, both for the desire for more parking downtown, at the same time as having conversations about increased multimodal, reduced parking, reduced vehicle use, and so forth. So I'm actually fairly comfortable with the number of parking spaces. I don't know if, if we're having this conversation, if there's potential for an increase in the number of spaces for Park Flag without increasing the number of spaces by reducing the number that are allotted for the residential, particularly with so many of those being studio and one bedroom, assuming that that means more than likely one vehicle for that unit. And given the location of it, in the midst of the downtown area with retail and grocery right there, also a significant reduction in the need for a vehicle potentially. So those are just things that are going through my mind as I'm considering that number, and feeling fairly comfortable with it.
Councilmember Sweet, then Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm really excited that we're having this conversation, and I love the possibilities that are ahead. Dave, I have a couple of questions for you in regards to the parking, and then I would like to ask Hunter to come up as well, so I can ask you a question. I'm wondering, how many spots are currently at the location? How many are employee parking permit spots? And did we lose parking with the DCC? What does that look like? And I know you're in the process of looking for other locations. Can you tell me a little bit more about how far along you are in that, and what's ahead in that?
There's a few questions in there, so let me make sure I get them all. I believe there's approximately 90 spaces that are being used as a surface parking lot, and as a reminder, those were not public parking spaces until just recently, when we demolished the old courthouse. So in many ways, that's, that's surplus to the numbers that we were talking about prior. The, they're all Employee North and Pay to Park, so they are, they are potentially permitted that way. potentially permit, permitted that way. And when it comes to the DCC, um, there is a plan for another, I believe potentially, uh, 75 to 100 spaces of a surface parking lot with the ability to go into a garage, um, over time, once the Rio to Flag has gone through. The timing is, uh, still being addressed, I think, and, and there are some engineering, uh, considerations that'll go in with there. With your, your broader question about the conversations that we're having, um, we, you know, it's so interesting because we, we have, um, for instance, I'm speaking with a, a developer tomorrow who, uh, is interested in partnering with us in the downtown to provide some significant parking. Uh, it's not details I can go into publicly at this point, but, uh, it seems very promising. We have had, um, multiple years and, and number of council items related to the foundation for senior living and that parcel, uh, we in, certainly intend to work with, uh, work with them, um, or any future owners, if it's not them, to, to generate parking there if potentially possible. Um, we, w- we have opportunities. The intention of not buying, uh, a full block and turning it into a parking garage is one that has made it sort of dependent on the private sector and on us being able to partner with development to receive smaller amounts. And so that makes it more challenging for it to happen on our schedule. Um, I can tell you that within the downtown vision plan, there are other areas that are spoken of as catalytic sites, which I believe, uh, our intention is to go speak with owners of those properties and see if there's potential for Park Flag to manage some of those or for redevelopment to happen with, uh, some partnership. So, do I have a definitive number of spaces that we can provide within the next one to two years? That, that answer is no, I don't. Um, are we confident that we will have spaces at some point in the future? Yes. The, the challenge is, is that without it being, uh, us purchasing a block and, and building a parking garage, i- it's quite difficult to pace that. Um, I think the, the loss of those spaces, uh, would be noticed within the downtown, uh, as Shane put out there. You know, much of the intention is to activate the downtown and to provide people for those businesses. And if you're adding residents and hotels that are being served by those parking spaces, one could make the argument that that's serving that same purpose, um, that those parking spaces are providing parking for downtown markets and visitation, uh, but it's not general public and it's not Park Flag revenue. So, um, there are some trade-offs there. I, I'm not sure if I was able to answer your question as precisely as you'd like.
You did great, thank you.
Thanks.
And like I said, I'm, I'm pretty excited on this and I know we're gonna come to a, a good decision with the parking. I, I do have a business downtown and through the years I've personally become less reliant on having people park right in the downtown. I feel like a lot of my customers are walking around and enjoying, um, having the amenities that this would offer. So thank you for talking with me on that. And I did wanna ask Hunter to come down.
Hello.
Hi, good to see you. Um, I'm wondering, have you been able to talk with business owners in the downtown and do they have, are they excited as I am on this? And do they have opinions on the parking? Has this been a topic of conversation?
Well, a- as you know, this project isn't fully public yet, so we haven't discussed that.
Yes, now.
Yeah, well, now it is, so maybe the questions will come tomorrow. But, uh, as of this point, I haven't had any questions about this, but, um, just to kinda piggyback on what the city manager and, uh, Mr. McIntyre said here, that, um, this is identified as one of our catalytic projects in our vision plan. It will be one of the fir-, it would be the first one, which makes it very important. Uh, it could really set the standard and it can show what cooperation with the city and with the, uh, private sector can do, uh, for vibrancy of our downtown. And, um, I'm looking at the page right now with the catalytic properties and, yeah, uh, the city manager was absolutely right. It's more of like a satellite approach and there's, there's plenty of other infill opportunities where we can chip away at that number of parking. But, um, as of right now, there, there is a lot of space dedicated to parking downtown, but, um, most of it is private and so some sort of shared service agreement or shared parking agreement could go a long way to closing that gap on the parking that we need there. But, um, at the end of the day, we'd all rather have, at least as far as people in my office and on my board, we'd rather have something that adds vibrancy to our downtown than a parking garage alone or a service lot.
Okay, and I trust that as we move forward, you'll be talking with the business owners, but I hope that everyone comes to the table with an open mind because I think, like I said, this is a great, a great feature for our downtown.
Vice mayor.
Thank you. Hunter, don't go far. I appreciate councilmember Sweet, uh, inviting you up. I definitely wanted to hear from you too. I'm gonna talk for a minute. Uh, David, maybe you and Hunter can take some notes on the questions I'm gonna ask and if you need me to rem- remind you what those are afterwards, I can certainly do that. But just to kinda throw out, uh, s- some popcorn thoughts here. Excuse me. Um, I, I, I am excited about this. I see how it fits with our downtown vision. I, I think it's the s- sort of thing that was amorphously in my head anyway. I have some concerns about the height and I'm gonna talk about that a little bit. Um, I, I do think, I like the density. Uh, I'm not, I'm not worried about the parking either. Uh, I'm glad the city manager was able to speak to this. It's not an issue for me. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm glad you could speak to this, Greg. Uh, the assumption that we owe the community a bunch of parking in that location is just, uh, not correct. But I would like to have a better sense of where some of that other parking is gonna be coming in and, and also how two hotels, uh, plan to navigate this. Shane, I, I believe you're the, the owner of the Residence Inn as well, um, so you have an idea in your head of, of where those missing parking spots are gonna be picked up and how that's gonna be dealt with. Um, but I think that needs to be sold to us and it needs to be sold to the public for sure as this conversation moves on. Um, I'm curious on, on how certain we are that we can get a grocer into this space or if that's just a complete theoretical at this point and we're just, uh, really rosy and optimistic that it'll happen. We've seen other big footprint locations around town, uh, remain empty and vacant. I, I think there's a different opportunity because this is right downtown. Um, but I'm just going to be skeptical as a challenge to us to make sure, uh, we know what we're talking about when we, when we're getting so excited about, uh, grocery store downtown. Um, city manager, you know that when we talk about parking, I, I like to, I, I like to envision our, uh, uh, parking structures to be convertible in the future, um, to another use. Once we stop using cars and we start using tubes, um, uh, I do think that, that sort of, uh, flexibility 50, 60 years from now is something that people are gonna be very grateful for, that we, we've had that foresight. I don't know, um, how this parking structure plays into that. Um, I think it's, I think it's worth talking about. And I, you know, I'll tell you, I'm, I don't love, uh, the studio and single bedroom, uh, numbers here. I would really like to see higher two-bedroom numbers, less studios. I would like to see young families in here. Uh, you know, young, uh, up-and-coming couples raising their kids and sending their kids to, uh, grade school in the neighborhood. Families are not gonna move into a one-bedroom. They're not gonna move into a studio. And as we're converting our downtown into a livable space, I think that's what we need to be focusing on. Uh, you know, th- the other problem is that, um, we already have a big hotel downtown. I've, uh, I, I'm just, I'm just channeling the public here. If we're putting up this, this seven-story big box building down here and it's, it's not maximizing, uh, the, the, um, focusing on our housing shortage, I think that's gonna be a sticking point. We need to make sure this is as palatable to the public as possible. And so those units need to be available to other types of people, uh, rather than just students. And, and that is what people are gonna think, so it's, it's a, it's a conversation we need to be able to answer. And a- again, Shane, maybe you can speak to the need for more hotel rooms, uh, right next to the Residence Inn? Um, I'm just, again, channeling a skeptical public here about that. Uh, and, and if they, if they, if the public is thinking that this is a hotel and we're not talking about families, uh, moving downtown, uh, it's, this is gonna get messy and it's gonna get, um, contentious. I also, I, I just have a, yeah, I, I just have a question. How does the roadway inn think about this or, or wh- wh- what has been that owner's and that developer's role in the conversation so far? Obviously it's gonna go away, but I, I'm just curious, um, h- how that conversation has been handled and, uh, I just wanted to check in on that. I think those are most of my comments here right now. Uh, just stalling here for a second as I look through my notes one last time. Maybe you guys can start answering some of those questions and if I miss something, I'll come back to it.
So I'll give it, I'll give a couple of them a shot. I, I do think, uh, Mr. Shumway will have to answer a couple of the other ones. The first question on the heights, density and parking, that Seymour statement, so I think those were just, uh, your, your perspective there. Where are we gonna do additional parking? Um, I think, uh, the likelihood is that those developments will happen along the northern edge of the downtown, if you will, sort of where the foundation for senior living is. Some of the properties along, um, Birch are potentially viable, although we have not been in direct negotiations with those owners, so that's always a di- difficult thing to say at this point. Um, we do, definitely are interested in providing parking on the east side of the downtown as well and we think there's some viable opportunities over there. Um, again, there will be a, a surface parking lot slash garage, uh, on the south of the tracks by where the DCC is. And, y- you know, some of the other developments are, are consistent with, um, more inti- more internal, but would be a part of a larger project with, uh, you know, other amenities attached and it would be similar situation where we'd be adding spaces on to what they required for their use. Um, but those would be more internal to the, the downtown. Um, with the grocer viability, I can tell you from an economic development perspective, we feel like it's viable, but I would look to, um, to Shane to speak to why he feels like it would be viable, 'cause as a, the person who'd actually be responsible for putting them in there, um, that would make a lot of sense. W- we feel like from an economic development perspective, that urban footprint is one that we see, uh, happen in other communities, but I do understand that, uh, mixed use has been a challenge in, in some parts of the community. Um, I do think this one's different, but Shane, would you be interested in speaking to that or?
And also just to throw it out there, I, you know, just a question. I don't, don't, don't think I'm suggesting anything, but I'm just wondering, um, does Trader Joe's ever move into, uh, multi, um, purpose developments?
I, I can't speak, yes. The, the fundamental answer there is they have urban footprints, uh, in many communities. A- as do-
I'm not saying anything, it's just a, just a random question.
That's such a great question. Wouldn't we love to see that? Um, so, um, the footprint of the, what we've planned for the grocery tenant in this is, uh, I think 17,000 square feet. Uh, that typically fits one of the smaller grocers, uh, footprint. Uh, so in terms of, do we have a smaller grocer that has a signed letter of intent that's ready to come in? No. In terms of our desire to pursue that and market that space for a grocery tenant, that's the tenant that we want. That's the, that's the use that we want in that space. I can't tell you that I'm going, that we have a person lined up ready to take that space. My hope is that we will eventually though. Um, the, the two-bedroom unit comment, um, I think that's a bit related also to, to the student housing comment. Our intent for this is for, uh, you know, young professionals, um, who are looking for a place, you know, a teacher that's moved to Flagstaff and, and needs a place to live, uh, that, that demographic. Uh, in terms of the, the breakdown of units, we're happy to kinda look at that and see what we can do. D- demand for a hotel, yes, there is. Uh, we'd also love to add conference space, which we have currently in our programming. We have conference space as part of the development. Conference space is sorely lacking in the downtown area and would be a significant benefit to the downtown area. Any other questions along those lines?
Were you involved in conversations with roadway inn?
I have not talked to them, no. But I will be happy to talk to them, um, if the city does anticipate moving forward with the project, so.
Great, thank you Shane. I think a lot of those questions were just meant to sit out there and make all of us a little bit uncomfortable and just to be remembered as, as moving parts and variables in this whole equation. Hunter, I don't know if you had anything else to add, um, regarding my questions or my comments, uh, but I definitely listen loudly to the downtown, uh, business alliance.
This is a, it's a comment, residential helps make the ortho height. The only-
I think we chipped away at all of these.
What do you have, comment?
May- maybe Hunter, uh, suggestions as, as you're starting to have these conversations with your, with your members, uh, focus in on some of these, these, these things that are giving me a little bit of heartburn and that I know the public is gonna find, uh, difficult to digest unless it's framed the correct way and unless we've, you know, come at this, uh, from the get-go with, with the right attitude.
Certainly, now that this is public, yes, we can move forward with those conversations.
Councilmember Harris.
Okay, so I have a number. So you think automatically my questions are for you, huh?
No, but we didn't want you to speak to, uh, asked to an empty podium, so.
Okay, thank you. Overall, I like the idea. I, I think it's great. I love the idea about there being some type of a conference room space on the top. Absolutely love it. We don't have enough of those kinda spaces, uh, in, in Flagstaff, so, um, if my vote counts, yes. Do have some, I have some comments. First of all, um, and, and this is a personal privilege. I have a son who lives in downtown LA. He's perfectly happy in an efficiency apartment. He does not want anything else and so he's, he's good. A young professional that's in and out, that's what those efficiency apartments are gonna do. Um, and they're gonna be really, really beneficial to them because they just wanna come, grab something at the grocery store, a Ralph's maybe, uh, and go upstairs to their apartment and have some dinner and be great. So I think you've got a, a, a good idea there. All I can suggest is that make sure that the grocery store is one that's affordable because some of those cannot, young professionals can't afford $10 for a bag of bread. The next thing I wanted to make a comment about was, I heard conversation about the DC, uh, space, that there may be some parking space there. Definitely we need to think about that because there was some conversation about there being some civic space, so let's not get real happy about that, okay?
I can speak to the fact that there will be civic space. That was, that was definitely a part of the agreement. That is still the intention. Um, you may recall there was a thin strip to the north of the parcel, north of the civic space where parking would go. Don't, don't worry, that civic space is, is, uh, is very, very clearly still in play.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and then, uh, another comment is about, um, the other night or a couple weeks ago when I was taking my son to the train station so he could go back to LA, I met a, uh, driver coming down the wrong way. Yes, yeah, that happens a lot in our town because I can guarantee you, I didn't see the license plates, but that person was probably out of town, probably wasn't from Flagstaff, 'cause most of us who live here know that Beaver is a one-way street and you can't come out of the train station and go right. Okay, so with that being said, I go back to my, a comment several times I've made now about talking with the other hotels about shuttles, so that we can drop people off at the train station, they can go do their business, eat, shop, whatever, get back on that shuttle and go back to wherever their hotel is. And the, for those folks who are living downtown in one of the two hotels, they're just walking. Um, and so I, I think that if we looked at the cars that are parked in our downtown area most days, I would almost guarantee you that most of those cars are visitors from out of town and they are not locals. Okay? And so I think when we're talking about parking and getting all whatever about parking downtown, most of those cars are from out of state and they would enjoy maybe somebody shuttling them from their hotel, uh, to whatever. So for those that are not staying in Airbnbs. So for those that are not staying in Airbnbs, another bad topic, but. And then the last thing that I would say, and these are just my comments, so no questions, Mayor, I'm sorry, I put a queue in the chat, but they're just comments, is that when we talk about the AD apartments, whatever those are, I would not live downtown with my kid, never, ever. There's nowhere for them to play, there's nowhere for them to, to, to walk. I would be, they'd be relegated to the inside all the time, because I would not put them on a street in a busy downtown. So I don't see the two-bedrooms as being a, a big issue or deal. That's me personally, my, my personal opinion. So, and that's it for me, thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Harris about the two bedrooms, but at the end of the day, we're not developers. You know, we all have opinions on, oh, well, this would be better for you to build this. Not that I've built any of those, but, you know, so Shane, we're not going to tell you what your expertise is. And I, I would totally agree that I would envision people that, employees, I mean, right now, we have over 40%, I can't remember the exact number, that commute from out-of-town limits into town to work, our workforce, and, which goes against our carbon neutrality plan. You know, we can do a lot of stuff inside, but if everybody's driving from out of the city limits to inside, so we definitely need those professionals that, you know, want to live and work downtown and, and, and I would imagine that Shane has done a little bit of research to figure out the best makeup on that. Back in another life, I was a commercial lender, though, and, and getting back to just another comment on parking, and I'm going to take from Vice Mayor's script where he likes to create tension, so I'll always want to create tension on parking and just always bring it to the conversation. When I was a commercial lender, and I had a lot of hotel owners here in Flagstaff, the average occupancy is about 50%. Now I can look around and go, how, why are these people building all these hotels, right? It's like, how many do we need? But I'm not a hotel owner, and I don't build hotels, so I imagine they're not building hotels for nothing and to be vacant, right? They know what they're doing, they're experts. But the reason why I bring up hotel vacancy is I was wondering, I know it would be a dream, but not a reality, that every day, 100% of hotel units are full. So I'm hoping maybe there can be a little bit of recalculation to give a few more spaces, because I, I know the city wants to go to multimodal and demotion of car use and stuff. We do have snow. I know we've kind of forgot about it up until last week, but, you know, it gets more difficult to ride a bike or go stand at the bus stop when we're in a blizzard, and so I will always want to create that tension to say we cannot totally ignore the need for parking, because we're not Florida beachfront community where people, you know, have the same climate year round. So I, I just wanted to remind that and, and put a little request in Shane's. I, I love the idea, it's what, I, I kept wondering when we would start seeing development come in downtown to meet our reimagination of downtown, and, and this sounds like a great way to start it off, so I'm really excited about that. I'd like a little bit more public parking, because we don't have a lot of available space. I mean, we're landlocked on a lot of reasons, and parking is definitely on the lower priority list, and there's not a lot of empty spaces. And just to the grocery store downtown, in, in the research I'm doing for a state policy project, Costco, I think it was in Colorado, maybe it was in Texas, built one of their big warehouses with three stories of housing above it, and it was a really great way to address that city's housing needs and still accommodate a development, so it is possible. So anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to say, that I'll always create that tension or try to create that tension for parking. I don't want us to forget that that was a promise made, and I'll do my best to make that a promise kept. I understand that our priorities and our focuses can change, but I don't want to lose any more customer confidence in us just not talking about it anymore and saying, well, I know that's what, why you voted and agreed to it, but we don't want to do that anymore. So I'll be that squeaky voice. So that's all I had to say. So thank you Shane for coming. We didn't mean to give you a hard time, but we really want to talk out these concerns that we know our citizens are going to have, and better to get them now before you've spent a couple of bucks on, you know, your, your, your plans, and then we go and try to get you going in another direction, so thank you.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the thoughtful discussion. I want to respond to the comment about the DCC and the parking in the civic space. You know, we, Council may recall, we had this discussion a couple of years ago, and there are a lot of competing interests for that particular parcel, not the least of which include the downtown connectivity center, which is happening, it's a beautiful building, the centralization of, of that utility over there, as well as the Rio de Flag flood control project, which bisects that property underground, and that property has not, or that project, of course, has not yet started, but when it does, it's going to be a significant construction project over there, the Civic Plaza pursuant to the, the South Side Neighborhood Plan. We had great discussion on that, and then, of course, the parking. And there is, and has been, surface parking over there, and in the midst of everything I just described, the surface parking is going to see a significant reduction. To try to reconcile all of these competing interests, we came up with a compromise solution that the Council seemed to embrace, and that was one whereby we would have the civic space, we would, of course, do our flood control project, the DCC would be built and designed in a way that would accommodate a future tiered parking structure, should the city ever find the resources to construct that. I, I think that needs to be noted with an asterisk, because, you know, best guess estimates now on constructing those internal parking spaces, $50,000 to $60,000 a space, when you look at the concrete and the steel and everything that goes into it. So these are expensive utilities to, to construct. Nevertheless, ones that could perform, you know, multiple uses, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, they, they can be built in a way to be converted. In this case, the structure would actually overtop the bus bays that will be serving the downtown connection center. None of this was to compromise the civic space, Councilmember. That is on the table and has gone nowhere. That would, that will be an important project, and, and we're all excited about it. As Dave mentioned, the access to this parking area would just be on a, a small sliver of land accessing, I believe, off of Beaver, right?
Yes.
And then be tucked away on the side of that parcel, not to impede upon the valuable civic space there. I just wanted to remind Council of the outcome of that discussion, it garnered a lot of attention a couple of years ago. And also, one last comment is, especially with the underpass, the pedestrian underpass that will now connect when it is built, all of these features become even more prevalent to the downtown community, because it will be conveniently accessed through an underpass rather than an act rate crossing with, with the railroad and so forth. So many features to look forward to, this is all kind of looking ahead, but something that, again, adds to the parking discussion and will be significant. Thanks.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things. First of all, Shane, thank you very much, and recognizing that before you invest this kind of money in something, you are going to do extensive market research, and we know that. I'm wondering whether parking for the grocery could also be used for downtown shoppers, like maybe you get two hours free and then you have to pay for additional parking. I, I go to a theater in Culver City, and there's a Trader Joe's across the street, and they have a parking lot, they have a garage that they use like that. And back to the market research, if you're interested, our housing section could talk to you about the mix of studio and one bedroom, because I hear repeatedly from them that, that that's what we need most of, is studio and one bedroom. I'm not so concerned about the parking, I'm more concerned about the vibrancy and what a project like this can bring to the downtown and how it can help other projects get going, but I am very interested in what the Downtown Business Alliance has to say about all of this. But in terms of a direction for you, I, I think that you've heard that there's general like for the project, and we understand that there are many more details to come back to us, but you got the alley thing taken care of, and, and then we talked a bunch about other stuff.
No, thank you. I think we do have clear direction, and I want to make sure, I heard some people raise concerns about the height. It was, seemed like it was a passing statement, but that there was a recognition that with that, we're getting a lot of the things that we need to really start the reinvestment in our downtown, and so I take that, that we should continue to negotiate with the, with the elevations that we have before us. And as I've said, from the time that we were talking about the downtown vision, this is where we want our density and this is where we want our height. So I'm, I'm more concerned about, I think, the design and, and how it all fits in than the height, but is there anyone who'd like to weigh in strongly?
I'll just clarify one thing. I, I think the important thing is how we frame this from the get-go, it's the narrative. There's going to be a, an instinctual knee-jerk reaction to think that this is student housing. It's not, it's not intended to be. Whatever the numbers fall out to be in terms of studios and one bedrooms and family units, let's just make sure the conversation is about young professionals and young families and not any U students. I think we've kind of moved on from that, but there's, you know, there's going to be some PTSD there that we should be aware of and we should be, we should be ready to talk through from the get-go. Let's bring it up ourselves and not be reactive to that. That's, that's all I'm really talking about.
Do you feel like you have it?
I feel like we have it, and I think we are all incredibly excited to be in partnership with this, this development, development and this developer, and so just thank you for your guidance.
Yeah, thank you all. Okay, we are moving on to item number three, U.S. Department of Agriculture, Urban Agriculture and Innovative Production Grant update.
My name is Natalie Pearson, and I am the Food Systems Coordinator for the City of Flagstaff Sustainability Office. I'm here with a few of our project partners and really, really excited to share with you all the key findings of the Community Food Systems Assessment for Flagstaff in Northern Arizona. This is phase one of a project funded by a United States Department of Agriculture grant. So what we will be discussing today is the history and purpose of this grant and the process and key findings for this Community Food Systems Assessment. We will also highlight key partner contributions, share updates on where we are now, and have time for questions. So this evening, joining us tonight will be Summer Grandi with Flagstaff Food Link and the Flagstaff Family Food Center, as well as Eileen Horn online from NVA or New Venture Advisors, who is our project lead. Also want to highlight other key partner contributors at the bottom of the page, past, present, and future, as well as take a moment to sincerely thank every single community member who contributed to this project, whether it was through surveys, interviews, our community engagement, listening sessions, or contributing your feedback, as well as our project steering committee that helped with the Community Food Systems Assessment, and all of our external and internal partners that made this happen. So what is the purpose of this grant project? It is really threefold, where we are, we were looking to collect research on food systems across the five Northern Arizona counties. We also wanted to foster community engagement with the city's climate goals related to cultivating an accessible local food system, and third, to assist the city in developing local food system programming in the long term. This project is multi-phased, focusing on four goals, which was, the first goal that we were talking about tonight was to conduct this comprehensive Community Food Systems Assessment and collect data. Another goal was to present these findings to our stakeholders and our community members to increase awareness and understanding of the current state of our food system. Our third goal was to really assess the feasibility of strategic business opportunities, whether it's a food hub or commercial community kitchen, to see how we can support the priorities that community members have shared, and use all of this to really develop a food action plan and programs to invest in our local food system and urban agriculture opportunities. So with that, I will pass it on to one of our project partners, Eileen Horn with New Venture Advisors, who will share the process and key takeaways from the Community Food Systems Assessment.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As Natalie said, my name is Eileen Horn, and I work for a consulting firm called New Venture Advisors. What we do is we do food system planning and food business development in, in the local food system, and we work, our clients are across the country, and we've really had such a great time working with your community, and it's been a real pleasure to get to work with Natalie and the rest of the sustainability team to, to conduct this assessment. One thing I just want to say at the outset is that, you know, this is, this is the first phase, which is to gather this baseline data and to provide this foundation for you all, and we're really excited that we get to partner with you on some future phases to help you all turn these into actions for your community. Natalie can go to the next one. So a little bit about the process that we utilized to conduct this Community Food System Assessment process. First, we collected extensive secondary data, and so by secondary data, I mean sources include U.S. Census, the Census of Agriculture, county health rankings, Feeding America, that tracks food insecurity across the country, and local community health data. So we pulled that secondary data that you'll see throughout the report. We also conducted a community-wide survey with over 1,000 responses from residents of Northern Arizona and predominantly from Coconino County and Flagstaff. And we had a wide array of participants in the food systems, so we heard from consumers, growers, and food business entrepreneurs primarily. We then conducted six focus groups that had 34 participants, and we specifically reached out to key stakeholders in the sectors you see listed, so we talked to grocery retail partners, chefs, funders in the food system, the folks that operate pantries and food banks in your region, farmers and ranchers, the folks in your community interested in institutional food, like school districts, and then the partners in your community working on food waste recovery. So we had very targeted conversations with, with those sectors. And then we also conducted a social network analysis. This is a tool that helps to identify who are the central players in the local food system, and what are the relationships between the different partners and, and, and these networks. So in addition to gathering all this quantitative data about your food system, we also helped to map key organizations who are real leaders in this space, so that you all could use that information to, to know who to partner with to move forward. Next slide. So just a little bit of grounding, and in terms of how we define the food system, we worked- We worked with Natalie and her team and Steering Committee that had several key partners. And they helped us design the structure and identify these values for the food system. And just wanted to start off with, you know, you all have the report in front of you. So you know these six sectors. But this is how we attempted to take a system and divide it into pieces. But the food system assessment that you have in front of you is broken into these sections, all the way from how the food's produced, to how it gets to your table, to how people access it or don't, and then what happens afterwards in terms of food waste and recovery. So those are the major sections in the assessment. What I'm going to do today is give you a pretty high level overview. We don't have a ton of time. And if you've seen the report, you've seen that there's a lot of information there. So I'm just going to do one, you know, one or two slides per section and just give you a quick voiceover of some of the things that really jumped out to our team and to the Steering Committee. So the first section starts with the agricultural landscape and food productions. This is where food comes from, right? So some of the things that really stood out to our team are listed here on this slide. And it's exciting news that the direct-to-consumer food sales in the region are growing. There's strong demand for local foods. However, we heard from stakeholders that the distance to the southern part of the state really limits the business opportunities for some food system entrepreneurs and growers. Also, you all know this, you live in a challenging climate to grow food, so we heard a lot about that. But despite that, producers had a lot of interest in collaboration with other food system businesses, such as processors, manufacturers, distributors. And one interesting thing that I think is unique to the region, and we don't see a lot in our food system assessments, is that the cultural differences around Native American production of food really can kind of downplay in the data the impact of the economic impact to your community. So we learned through interviews and focus groups that while much of the food that is produced is shared or consumed or, you know, grown for personal consumption, that's not going to be captured in the Census of Agriculture as a revenue stream. And so just wanted to highlight that, that that's an important part that we discovered about the elements of production in your food system. As you'll see in the report, we got really excited about maps and mapped all the things. But this one, I wanted to point out in the act production chapter that shows where the farmers markets are, where the CSAs are, and also which counties are producing the most food for direct-to-consumer sales. So that means folks who are selling at farmers markets, CSAs, and selling direct to their consumers. So you can see across the region how that plays out. Another map you all may be interested in is we mapped access to community gardens within the city of Flagstaff. And so you can see the leaf is a location of current community gardens. And then we drew a half-mile walking radius from those community gardens into the surrounding neighborhoods. And then, as you can see, the base layer includes the percentage of households with incomes of less than 185% of the poverty limit. So you can see that in some areas in Flagstaff where poverty is highest, we are actually lacking community gardens and opportunities for folks to grow their own food. The next section is food system infrastructure. This is how food is moved from the farm and then processed and distributed into retail outlets. We heard a lot about the lack of processing in terms of meat processing and commercial kitchen spaces, and also a lack of distribution infrastructure. A lot of this was really attributed to the vast geography of the region and the distances as a major contributor to that. But it is a barrier for food system businesses in your region. And we heard a lot about the need for increased funding opportunities to support business development in this space and to support these entrepreneurs. We also mapped the current food system infrastructure in the region so you can see where the meat processing facilities are, where the bakeries are, warehouse and storage facilities, and where the shared kitchens are located. The next section we tackled was the food retail environment. So this is where a lot of us enter the food system space as consumers. So these are grocery stores, restaurants, cafeterias, et cetera. Not surprisingly, you know, access to food in these food stores are concentrated near urban and suburban centers. And there are many fewer options in rural areas of the region, especially on reservation land. Food access and food outlets are very limited. This has led to some food outlets to actually directly purchase from farms, which is great to see. And there are several restaurants and businesses who want to source and sell local foods and shared that value system with us. But what we did hear over and over, and you all know this as well, the high cost of food is a serious challenge. We heard it in every discussion we held with your community about food systems. And locally grown food is especially perceived as being expensive and hard to access. This next map is zoomed in on Flagstaff and it shows the location of supermarkets and grocery stores, farmers markets, CSAs, and convenience stores. And then the layer underneath is a layer you may have heard referred to as a food desert, but this is a low-income and low-access census tract. So you all can check that out and see how the distribution of food access or food retail locations maps to the need in the community. The next section we dug into was food consumption and health. And as you all know, you know, lack of access to healthy foods is a major social determinant of health. And there's a clear link between the food you have access to for you and your family and your health outcomes. The lack of access is particularly acute in the rural parts of the region and reservation lands. And it contributes to negative health impacts in the region. In fact, we found through the county health rankings, three of the five counties in Northern Arizona rank among the least healthy in the state. And again, when we talked to constituents and asked people about health, it was affordability of food that was a key barrier. But folks also shared with us that the rising cost of housing in the region is making it even more difficult for folks to make that choice between housing costs and food costs. We also did a particular section related to food access, which relates to how community members either have or don't have access to adequate, affordable, and culturally relevant foods. And really, all parts of that are important, that folks have access to food, they can get there, that it's affordable when they get there, and that it's also the food that they want to eat that aligns with their culture and their values. So we, through the secondary data, discovered that food insecurity rates in Northern Arizona are higher than the state average and that children, Hispanic, Black, and Native American populations suffer from higher food insecurity than their white counterparts. One of the key findings that I'll share with you on a map in a second is that SNAP benefits are not being used as widely as they could to help address this. Again, housing and utility costs compete with food purchases. Transportation challenges were often cited by folks as a challenge that reduces their access. And there was a really strong interest that came through in the survey and focus groups around people having the skills and knowledge to grow their own food and provide their own food, and that that was a gap to food access. So a couple maps here. We mapped the overall food insecurity in the region. You can see that it's highest in Apache County. But Coconino is at 12.6%, so that's overall. But the child food insecurity rate is very high. Apache County has almost a 25% child food insecurity rate. And Coconino's is at 14.4%. All of those are higher than the state average in your region. And the one that was a real eye-opener for us was that the percentage of eligible individuals that aren't receiving SNAP benefits is also really high. So in Coconino County, 30.7% of residents that are eligible aren't receiving SNAP. And so, as you all know, SNAP formerly called food stamps, the Supplemental Nutrition, I'm forgetting what the acronym is, but SNAP. This one really kind of can serve to fill the gap for families and help them afford food that they choose. And so this was alarming, I think, for a lot of our partners to see. And then the final section that we looked at was food waste and recovery. Arizona is actually ranked number one in the county for food waste, but not in a good way, like in terms of the highest food waste in the nation. But you all know Flagstaff has a ton of initiatives to support the reduction of food waste. So you all are real outliers in the state in terms of the progress you've made on this. There have been significant efforts to decrease food waste at multiple levels. We heard from a lot of your university partners and local government partners about what was being done to reduce food waste, and we really commend you for that. But there was still confusion, especially among the business community, about what the health code implications are, what the liability is for them to donate food waste. And so there was still confusion and need for consumer education. And the most vexing problem is still this recovery of hot food, whereas it's a little bit easier to recover shelf-stable products and produce them from grocery stores. The recovery of hot food and getting it then immediately to someone that can utilize it is a challenge for restaurants and caterers and poses a real logistical challenge. So I think, that's my last one, Natalie? Yes. So as Natalie shared in the intro, there were a lot of great partners that worked on this project. And I'm going to pass it back to Natalie to talk about this.
Hi, y'all. Actually, she's going to pass it over to me. My name's Summer Grandy. I was the Food Systems Coordinator for Flagstaff Food Link during this project. I'm also the Client Advocacy Manager for Flagstaff Family Food Center. So I'm just going to kind of shout out the partners, the local partners in this project. So in Phase One and currently, Flagstaff Food Link has been a major partner in this project. Flagstaff Fam-- oh, sorry. I'm going to mix both of them up. There's too many Fs. Flagstaff Food Link's Food Systems Coordinator and Board were able to help with Phase One in a variety of different ways. So first, Flagstaff Food Link's relationships, both through their direct programs and through the Coconino Grower Coalition, which they lead, were leveraged to acquire key stakeholders, to leverage focus group members, and to distribute the survey throughout the Northern Arizona community. Food Link also was able to provide local knowledge throughout the process, and particularly in those key stakeholder interviews, to ensure accuracy and relevancy throughout the project. Now, switching hats, switching over to Flagstaff Family Food Center, they were also a key partner throughout the Phase One, particularly in the survey portion of this project. So because of Flagstaff Family Food Center's massive reach in the Northern Arizona community, their food box distribution program was utilized to distribute the survey and to ensure that the folks who are facing food insecurity and hunger were both heard in this project. Additionally, their CEO, Ethan Amos, who I think most of you know in this room, was a key person in the process as a thought partner as his in-depth knowledge of hunger and food insecurity in the region helped add the voice of equity and justice into this project. So together, Flagstaff Food Link and Flagstaff Family Food Center leveraged their built relationships, their local knowledge, and their current programs to enhance Phase One of this project. So moving forward, Flagstaff Food Link will remain a key partner throughout this project. And they will do that through the work of Sarah Sprague, who some of you guys know through her work with Forestale Farm, Super Yard Farm, Flagstaff Food Link, and Just Cultivation Coalition as Flagstaff Food Link's current Food Systems Coordinator. So with that, I will hand it back to Natalie Pearson so that she can talk about the next steps in this project.
Thank you, Summer. You all are doing truly incredible and inspiring work. And we really appreciate everything you all are doing and all of our local partners are doing. Which brings us to where are we now? Well, we're doing a lot of things. First of which, now that the Community Food Systems Assessment is published, together as a community, we're learning more about our local food system and sharing knowledge. We're also taking the time to be intentional and listen as we are wrapping up our community engagement listening sessions to better understand community needs and priorities related to our food system. Finally, we are taking what we have learned and what we have heard, using research findings and community engagement feedback to inform future programming for cultivating a local food system that better serves our community and addresses community priorities. So when it comes to further engaging with this project, you can learn more at our website, which is listed there on the slide above. You can also scan that QR code there to read the Community Food Systems Assessment in full. It is also published on our website. There is also still time to register for those community stakeholder gatherings that we're talking about quite a bit. They're happening later this week. One of them is tomorrow morning and the other one is Thursday afternoon. And if you want to learn more and register for these community food systems, community stakeholder gatherings, you can use that same link. We ask that you RSVP. Free food will be provided and it'll be a great opportunity to really not only learn more about the Community Food Systems Assessment, but also share priorities for what you would like the Community Food Systems to look like. So once again, we'd like to extend our gratitude to everyone who has contributed to this project so far. And thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, everyone here, for taking the time to learn and listen to our food system story here in Flagstaff. And we're happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. Councilmember House.
Thanks so much for the presentation. I think two questions for you. So first, just with the focus that you gave to the SNAP program and the underutilization of that, are there resources that we can share out that can be shared out through any of the city's social media pages or anything like that for SNAP education utilization, stuff like that?
Excellent question. And I'll say a little bit, and then Summer, if you want to add anything to for her work with the Food Center. That is something that we're working on developing. The county has a lot of SNAP resources that they're looking to distribute through the Public Health Program with Coconino County. But this is definitely something that we want to work on more. Summer, you want anything?
Yes, the answer is yes. No, but really SNAP outreach is obviously something really needed, not only in Coconino County but across Northern Arizona. And so this is something that the county, the Food Center, the Sustainability Office, and most folks just involved in food access in general are looking into. So we would love to partner in any way that we could. So maybe that's something we can brainstorm in the future.
Great, thank you. And then the second question is just, as you've been looking at our food system and networks and things like that, I know that there was a lot of interest maybe two or three years ago from some community members on like fruit tree areas and public, I can't think of the right word for it. It's not foraging, but just that idea of like public areas where people can kind of have free access to healthy foods. I'm wondering if that's something that was looked at as part of this program or survey? Or if that's something that's on the minds of this team?
Excellent question. I might pass it off to Eileen Horn to go into the details of the survey questions and how that was addressed. But it's definitely something we want to look into.
Yeah, thanks, Natalie. You know, we didn't, I don't recall hearing that point specifically, but I think it's wrapped up in the broader point that we heard from community members around the strong interest in self-provisioning and having the space and the tools and education to grow their own food. So while that didn't come up as a strong theme like that particular program, the overall desire for folks to have some sovereignty around where their food comes from was very strong.
Is that to answer your question?
It does, thank you. And last question, then, kind of along that same vein, is I know that there's been a lot of work that's happening with development of pocket parks or local parks and things like that. If that is something that would be potentially looked at for future development in Flagstaff Public Parks is for areas like that or resources like that that could be made, that sort of public space, whether it was gardening areas within those parks or foraging areas?
Excellent question. And there are a few items related to that that we can speak to where we've been able to do a little bit work moving where we've been able to do a little bit work moving forward that can serve as a good example of stuff we can do in the future, but it's also not limited to that. So first of which, we do have public community gardens open to the community. We have three of these that are run by the city and even more, as you could see in that map on our slideshow, for spaces where people can come together to learn to grow their own food, meet their neighbors, enjoy these beautiful green spaces. And we're working on making those more accessible and adding more of those. That's something that we would love to do when it comes to future programming and something we've heard from community members in those community feedback sessions and in those surveys, that that's something they would like to see. We've also seen other recent projects in parks, like you were mentioning. There is a new food forest at Bushmaster Park that was funded by a neighborhood sustainability grant and beautification and action grant through the city to work to start providing those foraging resources where people can access them. We also opened a new community garden in front of the Hal Jensen Recreation Center last spring. So again, mixing local public resources with those growing spaces. And hopefully this is something we can continue to do more of.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. I have a greenhouse, a fairly large one on my property, and I have a garden outside. And I have some fruit trees and berries and grapes. And it's definitely therapeutic. And I think that there's a lot of benefit for community gardens for social interaction and stuff. It cost me a lot of money to try to grow five cucumbers and a handful of tomatoes. I do it because I grew up on a farm, I grew up on a ranch. I keep hoping that the freeze, I'll protect my trees and I'll get some fruit next year. So I just want to say that because there's a social benefit to community gardens, but I don't know that that will ever help address food insecurities because seriously, I yielded four cucumbers off my cucumber plant that almost choked out everything else. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there. But also, for over a decade, I had a transitional housing program that I ran. And we had a community garden. We also had meetings. And when we had meetings, I would cook for the population there with food that we got from the food bank. And if necessary, would go to the dollar store and then we'd hand out recipes to teach them that they could make nutritious, more hearty foods than top ramen. So I don't know if that's a consideration. I don't even know if you have a platform. A lot of people that have struggled, more marginalized people that have struggled financially for a lot of their lives, they've just gotten in the habit of opening up, you know, a can of, you know, Chef Boyardee or top ramen. And there was a lot of benefit had by just saying, look, I, you know, I would see they would bring their food boxes from the food bank back and they'd only use one or two products out of it. And then they'd put the rest in the community pantry that nobody else would use because they didn't know how to cook with it. So my point is that there might be some benefit to just showing people how, you know, you can utilize this food that you get in just different ways to cook in a crock pot. You don't even have to have a stove or an oven and make something good for your whole family. So just a suggestion on that.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. And congratulations to Food Link for being the winner at WEENA this past week.
Thank you all for your time, we really appreciate it. And thank you so much for listening tonight.
All right. We are moving down to item number four. Update on the Red Gap Ranch Water Pipeline Feasibility Study. Hello, water people.
Good evening, Council. Mayor and Council, Erin Young, Water Resources Manager. And we're here to provide an update on the Red Gap Ranch Water Pipeline. We have, I have a team with me. We have Mr. Kevin Black, recently retired from working with the Bureau of Reclamation for many decades. And now he's seeking new job opportunities. And we're happy to have him onboard assisting us with many grant opportunities through the Bureau. And then we have Jeff Miner and Doug Smith with Jacobs Engineering. And we have Mr. Brad Hill, recently retired, coming back to the water industry as well. At least Jacobs and Brad, they've been working on this project for 16 years now. These big projects take a long time, as you well know. So I will kick things off and introduce the agenda and just provide a background on this project and why we're here today before I turn it over to Jacobs Engineering. So I'll go over the purpose and need, as I mentioned, some about the project history. We'll talk about coordination that occurred in the teens with ADOT, achieving rights-of-way acquisition and getting into the engineering design. And leaving you with next steps. This project goes back several decades. And coming into 2004, we had been in a substantial drought. Upper Lake Mary was essentially dry. And we were drilling emergency water wells that were not in our CIP program to meet demand for the community. In 2002 or 2003, we actually implemented our water emergency strategies because we weren't able to meet the peak demands of the community. So on the heels of that issue, Red Gap Ranch had been presented to the Northern Arizona region as a viable long-term water resource. And in 2004, our voters passed with 71% acquisition of property or water rights. And Red Gap Ranch was purchased for, I believe, 7.9 million of the 15 million. With the rest of the money, we were also drilling water wells, as I mentioned. Let's see. So City Council authorized the purchase of Red Gap Ranch in 2005 for that 7.9 million. Over 15,000 acres of land. City owns 8,500 acres of deeded property. The ranch came with, you can see some wells and infrastructure here. The ranch came with a proven water supply. The previous landowner wondered if they could market it as a water ranch and drilled municipal-sized water wells. Those wells were pumped at municipal hundreds of gallons a minute, 800, 900 gallons a minute. And the science suggested, yes, this is a treasure for some entity to purchase as a long-term water resource. Coming into the mid-2000s, the Coconino Plateau Watershed Partnership had been working with the Bureau of Reclamation on appraisal-type activities. There was a North Central Arizona Water Supply Study conducted with the Bureau. At that time, we were investigating the Western Navajo Pipeline. And many partners through the watershed partnership were investing in those studies. So the city was contributing funds and some of the Navajo and the Hopi. However, a lack of funding in the Rural Water Supply Fund pointed Flagstaff and the other entities to different water options, water supply options. The city continued to pursue Red Gap Ranch, sort of a lowercase feasibility study, which is what's presented tonight. The type of information that would fold into a Bureau of Reclamation a study on whether this is a supply that is a viable resource. We received a grant in 2013 to collaborate with the Navajo Nation on developing a groundwater model for, it's the Loop Red Gap Ranch groundwater model that could fold into the Bureau's process. We've spent a lot of money on Red Gap Ranch. And we're hoping that a lot of that money would be matching funds to continue moving forward. In 2011, the city, Flagstaff, actually City Council, directed staff to pursue a designation of adequate water supply through the Water Adequacy Program of the state. That's for the non-AMA part of Arizona. It's the framework that, for water planning that we can pledge, which we did. And in 2013, we modified our designation with all of our water resources. That's a 100-year planning to meet build-out demands of the city. So Red Gap Ranch is part of that designation. So we, it has been identified through decades that we do face a long-term water supply shortfall. With the drilling of those wells in the mid-teens, well, the 2000s and the teens, we've now built a pretty resilient water supply. Should a drought occur on Upper Lake Mary, we've got enough groundwater unlike we did in 2003. But this is a long-term resiliency project. We will continue to bring other supply options to the Water Commission and City Council in the future. This is just one step in this process. Today, we are presenting the Phase 2 Feasibility Study results. I touched a little bit on future water demand needs. Brad Hill actually recently updated these numbers for us. Assuming our regional plan build-out population with available land, we're looking at 6,700 to 1,1800 acre-feet annual deficit at build-out. I've listed several studies here. We've done, we've looked at water supply alternatives. So the IPR, DPR you keep hearing about, Red Gap Ranch. We've also conducted, recently updated the scenario analysis on our needs. Should we, with climate change and/or catastrophic wildfire potential impacts. So it's that whole scenario planning, that 6,700 acre-feet to 11,800 deficit. So we love to show our graphs. In red, we show the point in time that each scenario, which we have maybe 10 scenarios, I have two here today. The point in time where our water demand shown in acre-feet on the left, where we would need a new water supply in order to continue with development of, sustainable development of our current groundwater resources. The blue on the bottom is water supply from Upper Lake Mary. We're just showing, let's assume every year we have 1,900 acre-feet from Upper Lake Mary. But should that be lost to wildfire or drought, we can see the blue shrinks down on the left. We lose that resource. We keep delivering purple pipe reclaimed water into the future, but that trigger point moves forward to 2039. This is assuming that our population growth rate is 1.4%. It's a bit higher than the Econa recent projection. But we also have scenarios for a lower growth rate. This is also assuming that our community water use rate, a five-year average of 95 gallons per person per day, that continues into the future. Of course, that fluctuates. But this is how we define the target for kind of our future water needs. So we can, I can definitely take any questions related to the history or future water supply planning at the end of the presentation. So we'll move into that. Doug, turn it over to you.
Mayor and City Council, good evening. Good to be with you tonight. I guess when I start talking about the historical timeline and all the engineering that's gone over the last 16 years, the one word I'd use to describe it is tenacity. It's been a lot of working through struggles and hurdles and being able to come to you with what we have with the results of this feasibility study tonight. We started in 2008, '09 with the feasibility study of Phase 1 to really just get an alignment so we could move forward with future aspects of the engineering. And when we began the Phase 2 fieldwork, it became apparent that we had a right-of-way problem. We solved that right-of-way problem by working through different alignment alternatives. We looked at a southern alignment, which I'll show in a second. But it ultimately led to the pivotal moment in 2016 when that ADOT-IGA Intergovernmental Agreement was signed. And that helped us define our alignments where we could move forward with the subsequent years to be able to put us in a position to collect the technical data, to be able to get the final Phase 2 report together to bring this today. So it really is a momental day to be able to bring this to you. Originally in Phase 1, we had an alignment that followed the APS power lines. And the assumption was that we would have to get easements adjacent to the power line. And we had to work our way through what I call the checkerboard. You can see there in the lower right-hand corner of the map. And that property was alternating sections of Arizona state lands and Hopi lands. And so when it became apparent that those landowners were not going to cooperate with the project, we had to look for other alternatives. And that really is what led us into other studies. One of them was a southern alignment, which we looked at going all the way around the south end of the checkerboard to get, to find our way into the city. In this case, we tried to get into Lake Mary. But we ran the costs on it and you can see 18% increase in capital, 8% increase in operation. And it really was a showstopper for the project. So we abandoned that alternative and looked for other options. So one of them was to look at I-40. Instead of being along, adjacent to I-40, we looked at actually going within the I-40 corridor. And that turned out to take years of negotiations and discussion with ADOT and many different levels of government involved in developing an intergovernmental agreement that allows us to proceed with that right-of-way. So now we had in Segment 1, making our way through the checkerboard in the ADOT right-of-way, and then onto the I-40 fringe alignment through the National Forest, and then into Segment 3, which went on Townsend-Winona Road and then over Turkey Hills. But as part of looking at the cultural resources, some new information came to our attention. And we had to adjust our alignment through an additional study, which kept us in Townsend-Winona Road all the way into Flagstaff. And that, what you see on the screen, is the final study alignment, which we were able to move forward with in 2021. I want to remind everyone of some of the ADOT coordination items that came out of the IGA. And one of them is, we have to develop, in working with ADOT, an emergency response plan in case something went wrong with the pipeline and it interfered with I-40. We also have to look at the costs of mitigating that traffic. And that's all part of the IGA. As from the design perspective, we have to work with ADOT on the engineering criteria. They have a separate engineering consultant to review the criteria. And then that criteria still needs to be finalized before you go into final design. One of the issues in the criteria is an example for minimum cover over the pipeline. There may be differences of opinion between ADOT and what our consulting team believes as far as the amount of cover that's needed over the pipeline. ADOT may say our criteria says five feet. We think that four feet is enough. One foot is a big difference in the cost of the pipeline because some of that trenching and excavation is in rock. So a brief note about rights-of-way. We did investigate that in all three segments, and I already mentioned some of that. Ownerships have changed a lot since Phase 1 in the last 14 years. And so, and with the shift in the pipeline alignment, we really looked at what was out there to determine if there are any barriers and also help us anticipate land acquisition costs to understand the full cost of the project. One particular nuance of this is in the ASLD right-of-way within I-40. So one of the interesting things about a right-of-way research is that when we come through the checkerboard in Interstate 40, that land is actually in easements over state lands. So you would think that ADOT would have fee right-of-way, owned right-of-way for their entire interstate. But they don't. They're sitting in easements. So the underlying land is actually owned by state lands. But state lands has cooperated with us and the- with us, and the easements for the pipeline on on the I-40 right-of-way have been acquired. So we were already that far ahead on that part of the alignment. So now getting into a little bit into technical details, I'm going to go pretty quick. So on the pipeline size, it is 30-inch steel. It was sized based on a seven-month delivery of the 12,000 acre-feet per year on an increasing schedule of 160 feet, increasing 160 acre-feet each year. So it was an economic pipe size that that landed us with a 30-inch size. We did geotechnical investigations to support the Phase Two study. That was a test pit every mile of the 40 miles, and that told us what underground strata we were looking at as far as is it limestone, sandstone, what are we going to be digging through? And that informed our cost and our transaction. For the pumps stations, we developed this nomenclature. You can see the locations, pump station A through D, and the pump station are sized to lift 18 million gallons per day to the next uphill pump station. So essentially, the way they work, we start with the pump station at Red Gap. We pump about 10 miles and lift about 500 feet. We get to the next, we fill a tank, we empty that tank and go to a pump station and on up until we get into the city for 2,000 feet of lift and 40 miles of length. A note about electrical supply, each one of the pump stations, right now is assumed to be fed by APS power supply drops, and there are different voltages which are which are shown here. We'll have the transformers at the pump station and the cost sharing between what APS would pay for, what the city would pay for, hasn't been fully determined at this time. So it's not in the report. There would be diesel generators at each site to allow us to pump continuously. And we understand that solar power is important because of City Council's Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So there is ongoing communication between the city and APS regarding developing solar panels at Red Gap. And we need about 10 acres of land or about 10 megawatts of power to be able to power the entire facility, including the pump stations. So we could distribute the power from Red Gap up the mountain to the individual pump stations, or there's even an option to develop solar arrays at each one of the pump stations, but that would require additional land allocation at each one of the pump stations. So that's an option that we haven't fully addressed in the report, but we pointed out what the alternatives could be. At a typical pump station site, you have the tank that I mentioned, then you have four vertical turbine pumps. As I mentioned, the pumps will lift it up to the next tank, and there's so there's three pairs of these pump station sites going up the mountain. As far as control schemes, we can operate as a pull system where the tank that's in Flagstaff actually determines how much water is pulled with the mountain based on that tank level, or we could push it, we could pump it at a uniform rate and bring it into the city at a constant rate pumping from the well field. We'll determine that in final design. So finally, the water plant. Basically, it's a project with three components, the pipeline, the pump stations, and the water plant. And so the questions are what finished water quality do we need to have to serve the customers in Flagstaff? What type of treatment do we need to get to that? And what location should we have? So a quick table of water quality, we've compared some things here from Flagstaff's existing wells, surface water from Lake Mary, the Red Gap Ranch well water, and Glendale, just as a comparison for you. And you can see in red, the key factors we're seeing there are the TDS, or total dissolved solids, and the sulfates. So these are the main constituents that we believe need to be treated, and the city staff has recommended a target of 250 milligrams per liter TDS. So our report and our costs include knocking down the TDS to that level. So the process that needs to do that is essentially a membrane technology to be able to drop the TDS and sulfate. Conventional treatment won't get us there, so we do have to go to the membrane cartridges to be able to do that. Now, that will create a stream of brackish water that'll have to be disposed of. We can use evaporation ponds to do that, or mechanical evaporation, or we can even use injection wells, but those aren't permitted in Arizona right now. The membrane technologies may require pre-treatment as well, and so that's included in the assumptions. Where would the water plant go? We identified three areas, either at Red Gap Ranch, either near the Wildcat Hill wastewater plant, or near an intersection of US 89 and Townsend-Winona Road, and that's an undetermined location. It would just be in that general vicinity. So the considerations for that is what footprint do you need and how much land would you need? How would the brine be disposed of at that location? What are the potential potable water customers along the pipeline? In other words, along that 40 miles, are you going to be serving customers with a certain water quality coming up into the city? Or is it more important to treat at the city boundary and just pump well water through the pipeline? And then, of course, the operations staff is a consideration because if we're going to have water plant operators all the way down to Red Gap, that's a that's a longer drive for them to get there. A current study assumes it would be at Red Gap Ranch. That's what the cost estimate reflects. It is a final design determination. So note about environmental. As we went through with our local environmental subconsultant on the work, we looked at flora and fauna and wetlands and cultural resources. And there's a lot more detail on this in the report, but the bottom line is that we didn't find any showstoppers. We didn't find anything that could not be mitigated. If we found a cultural resource, we identified a means to be able to deal with it. And so and I want to emphasize, our cultural resource expert is local. So we applied, I think, our best technical resources to this. And so you can see there are the notes under the Phase Three of our study, which is to begin to engage the Bureau, and Kevin's here to talk a little bit more about that, and to establish a rapport with other affected agency personnel to look forward to NEPA compliance, which eventually we'll have to deal with, and then do additional field investigations as necessary. But the point I want to leave you with is, from an environmental and cultural standpoint, we everything can be solved. So finally, I want to talk to you about the cost estimate. So here are the big numbers. This is a Class Four estimate, which is based on a Level Four 10% design, so there's a lot of detail left to be filled in to make the cost more accurate. You can see here, we have the pipeline and pump station components, and so we gave you the total cost for that, and then we have the water treatment plant component. And I think it's important to separate that out because looking into the future, that may be something that turns into a variable. Again, contingency is 20%. Overhead power cost is not included because I mentioned, we're not sure whether APS or the city, how that would be paid for. The Red Gap Ranch well field, Ranch well field and collection system is not included. That was not in the scope of our study. And the solar power array is not included since we didn't know exactly how the power supply would be done. There's no phasing in this cost, and phasing is possible. For example, you could put in two pumps at each pump station and start some preliminary water moving instead of building all four. And you could build two tanks at each pump station at a reduced size and then add another tank in the future. So there's possible to to reduce the initial capital cost by doing some phasing. We don't believe you can phase the 30-inch pipeline, though, and that is, of course, the big elephant of the cost estimate. So there's options about blending of the treatment. We assume no blending, and that would, again, adjust that TDS line, about how much salinity are we going to have to get out of the water? So that's a consideration. And then, of course, there's the brand-new settlement agreement. And and so since our report is just getting done, the settlement agreement is getting done, we weren't able to incorporate other questions or issues from the settlement agreement, which include include additional phasing, points of delivery to other users along the pipeline if it becomes a regional project, and a reduced level of water treatment because those users may not need the TDS dropped to 250. And and so some reduced level of water treatment may be appropriate. Okay. Erin, I think it might be back to you.
Mayor and Council, we are here as we know how much you love engineering studies. But this is a point in our process, this is a very technical report. It basically marks the report complete, this presentation to you. In the near term, we've, let's see here. Very recently, we've had briefings, we presented this to the Water Commission, we're presenting to you tonight. We've submitted a letter to the Bureau of Reclamation requesting that assistance to build a an appraisal process with us. That would factor in our water supply needs and all available options. So we're seeking those collaboration opportunities with the Bureau. We're continuing to investigate and monitor funding, and beyond this would be public outreach events as we get into that appraisal process. And that marks the end of our our presentation, and as as you know, we have folks here to address questions. Did I miss anything there? Or would you like to add anything? Would you like to say something?
Yeah, just Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council, staff, it's good to meet you in person. We've had a number of discussions over these past few weeks, and I'm excited to have joined your water team. It's excellent group of talent. Over the next several weeks and months, we'll be working on this scoping that has been lightly touched upon here. But the completion of this piece of work will go into the record along with a whole bunch of other work. I was sitting back here reflecting on the first time I stood before you all was in 1996, when I was a much younger person, working on the settlement version of that era and appealing to you all and answering questions about entering into an agreement to initiate the North Central Arizona Water Supply Study. Here we are nearly 30 years later, and that study still, as was mentioned in many others, will go into the mix here now to look at the conjunctive use of Red Gap Ranch, interactions with the Navajo Nation and Hopi Tribe and others. So we'll have a lot of discussions forthcoming, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. And I want to say one last thing. Although I have stood here as a Bureau representative a number of times, I do not speak for the Bureau of Reclamation. There will be a Bureau of Reclamation person standing here eventually, but I certainly know a lot about it. And so with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and if you have any questions, any of us can answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, questions, comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you all very much. I've enjoyed this conversation over the past six years, and I look forward to continuing to engage in it. I feel like someone who owns an EpiPen, you know, I'm glad we have Red Gap Ranch in our pocket. I hope we don't have to use it. That's been my position. I've been pretty consistent about it. You know, it's interesting, we can't really invest in all this infrastructure unless unless we're we're planning on pulling the trigger on this. So eventually, I think that's going to come our way. I'm not personally concerned about the the timeline, the the rate at which this conversation is happening. I don't see those red flags, and I hope we can continue to keep that at bay. Just a couple of comments. I'm very concerned about the idea of a constant stream of diesel fuel being used to pump this water. I would infinitely prefer we use a more carbon-neutral approach to that, and so those investments would be something that I would that I that would be my direction every time. You can take that to the bank. And then I I am concerned about the brine. You know, been learning about desalinization and how that works all around the world, and the the brine is an issue, its own environmental concern. I'd like to learn more about that, so maybe as we move forward, a more scientific, in-depth look at that sort of thing. Erin, maybe that's a suggestion we can make to the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council for a presentation just down the road. Just thinking out loud here about that, those are sort of my ongoing concerns. I I do think it makes sense that there would be users along the way, along the route, so we would want to get that water treated earlier rather than later. That's just a starting point for my thinking on this. Of course, all of this will be contextual in the end and based off of details that aren't available yet. It's kind of my thinking along the way. Happy to share that with you, happy to share it with the public. If you have any reaction to it, please go ahead. If not, I look forward to the rest of the discussion and hearing what others have to
Thank you, Counselor, for those comments. I can answer, I can respond to the diesel issue. I went really fast, and so I probably confused someone, but the diesel generators are a backup power supply and not a continuous supply of power.
That makes a lot of sense, and that's definitely a different story. Thank you.
Yeah. There would be diesel on-site, for sure, but it would only be if the electrical power coming from APS directly or from solar is not available.
Understood.
As far as brine disposal, we totally agree, it's an issue, and it certainly needs to be looked at seriously during a final design. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you. Apparently, to meet our water quality standards, we're going to have to use something like reverse osmosis to treat the water. So if we're going to be doing reverse osmosis, have we considered doing that and using our supply of our reclaimed water instead of Red Gap Ranch water? Maybe not for all of it, but for part of it.
Councilmember McCarthy, that those kinds of ideas are are discussed if there are blending opportunities, or if we happen to be advanced treating water here in Flagstaff with reverse osmosis, that's where one of the locations potentially to treat the Red Gap water could be in tandem with, you know, reclaimed water for advanced treatment as well. So those things would be looked at.
I have a couple of questions for you, Erin. Well, mostly expressing, much as Vice Mayor did, that from the time that city voters voted to purchase Red Gap Ranch, I have always hoped that it would be, you know, our our last step or one of our last steps in water development. And I think I think staff and a lot of other people have always looked at it that way as well. Can you help council and the public understand what what water conservation, what water development, what water reuse is likely to happen before that investment is made in Red Gap? Is that something that you're able to do? And not in-depth, but just so that that the public understands that that we we have other methods of obtaining water that we're looking at as we are doing feasibility studies on Red Gap.
Mayor, I'd be glad to take a stab at that question with a two-part answer, and I'll see if Brad would like to add anything. First, going back in time to 2005, when Red Gap was purchased, we believe the projected date to need the water was 2020 at that time. We have continued to drop.
Somewhere close, yeah.
Somewhere close. We've continued to drop our community water use every year. That pushes out the need for a project like that substantially. We have deferred that project need substantially. We've also added, like I've mentioned, just that we're growing into our local groundwater supply that's in our designation of adequate water supply, which we still have room to do that. Also, since 2005, we've we're pretty maxed out with reclaimed water in the summer. We we all of it's used by our our users in the summer. But the one advancement that is we're looking at for next year is is direct potable reuse. But the one advancement that is, we're looking at for next year is, is direct potable reuse being an option for, for us. That opens the door for the shoulder months of the year when we do have water to either do that indirect potable reuse or potable reuse, but making a beneficial use out of the 3,500 acre feet we have today, introducing that into our portfolio, requiring advanced treatment, which is not cheap. But that's what we'll kind of investigate through this appraisal study if we start working on that with the Bureau, how all these pieces fit together. The second piece to my answer would be, even though Red Gap, it's like, okay, it's out there, we, it's our last option, having 12,000 acre feet of water, let's just say redundancy for today, 9,000 acre feet of water, if we had a catastrophic fire and a substantial drought in a 10-year period, being able to pump that water in our community and keep our community with water is such a huge advance for, for Flagstaff over maybe other communities. So that might be a reason we still build it before we need it. And then we start to optimize our systems. We're pumping groundwater in these systems, we're pumping Red Gap Ranch, we're, so we have to look into how we can optimize these systems together. We don't want to wait till it's a crisis to build a water supply project like that. And they do happen around the world. All of a sudden, South Africa, they're trying to build these gigantic projects. So, you know, yeah. So I'll, hopefully that addressed the question, and then.
No, I think you're great.
Okay.
Yeah, that was great. And one other point, it was talked about starting with two tanks and then building more, although the pipeline would be necessary even if the tanks and the pump stations weren't installed. There is the opportunity, I'm assuming, for those entities that are likely to tap into this pipeline to help pay for the pipeline through their connecting to it, correct? And is that going into, is that already in the figures, the numbers that you gave us? And if not, will it be in future numbers? Or when will it be in future numbers?
Mayor, yeah, those, an opportunity for how potential users along the pipeline could contribute to the funding is not part of those numbers. But this appraisal process and entering the feasibility process with the Bureau identifies partners, identifies how they can contribute into funding the soft costs. So all these engineering studies and the eventual hard costs of building a project. When, when entities participate through funding, there is a match component to that, to, to the federal dollars. So am I safe saying, Kevin, that through the public process, those parties are identified that would potentially contribute? And when they contribute? And, yeah, would you like to add anything?
Yes, yes. I just think the economy of scale that we're pursuing in the appraisal work would look at both their capital contribution and the operation maintenance replacement. So indeed, yes. And, and that would essentially reduce the federal dollar required for the project. That's, that's the concept, is substantially reducing the federal dollar, utilizing the partner-funded aspects or, or pieces of that.
Thank you very much. Aaron, one more thing. The assured water supply, that 100 years of assured supply, red, water from Red Gap is calculated in that.
Correct.
And so when we re-up that certification every year, we have to show the state that we're still moving forward with something related to Red Gap.
Mayor, correct. So the designation of adequate water supply was actually granted for a 20-year period. It's either triggered by demand accelerating faster than we thought it was when we got the designation in 2013, where they say, okay, Aaron, you're reporting to us every year. Actually, you're close to that trigger point. What supplies do you have to meet that trigger point? If we don't reach that trigger point within 20 years, then they'll evaluate us in 20 years. And they'll want to see that we're making progress on Red Gap Ranch. So that we're not trying to develop that big of a supply and leaving our community hanging without water. So there is a trust but verify, but it is kind of within a 20-year period with annual updates.
Thank you very much. Counsel Member Sweet?
Thank you. And I first want to thank the team for being here and giving the update. Glad to see you all. And I'm glad to hear that we're being proactive in this. I do think the RGR is a very important component to our water portfolio. So thank you. And Aaron, I think it was like a year and a half, two years ago, you and I went out to Red Gap Ranch. And I think I've asked you before, but I would really recommend that at some point we take counsel back out there because it really helped me to have an idea of what we're talking about and the location. And I don't know if that's possible, but putting that in your ear, that I, I, I found it very valuable. Thank you.
Mayor, Counsel Member Sweet, anytime you all want to come out, we'll, we'll take you in. We love putting you to work to get groundwater levels because that's where things do start to connect, you know? Like tagging that water level, how deep is it? And talking about our wells and, yeah, thank you for that.
You know, I think we're going to be talking about this for a long time. So to get counsel really involved and to have that bigger picture, going out there would be helpful.
Counsel Member Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for that presentation. I actually understood everything you said. That is amazing. So great presentation. And that's a mark of a good presentation when people that don't have your level of expertise can follow you. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I'm sure, Aaron, that we've got some plans about how you guesstimate when you're going to need to pull that trigger and all of that kind of stuff. I can't imagine that you wouldn't, right? And it's not something that you could say, oh, we need it tomorrow. And so you try and say, so we're not there, right? So I just want to make that clear to whoever might be listening, that this is not something that we can do, we need it tomorrow, so we're going to start building it tomorrow. You got to be way further out ahead.
Mayor, Counsel Member Harris, absolutely. These projects are very difficult to execute quickly. And thanks to the leadership of city council over decades and the investment they've made in our water resource planning, we're in a very good position to, to take our time, evaluate the options, set ourselves up hopefully for federal funding. That process takes time.
And I know there will be people that will say, well, we have a 100-year, why do we need Red Gap? So I think we probably should be ready to, to answer that question sooner than later. I never, I think that you can never have too much water.
Mayor, Counsel Member Harris, all of council, Brad Hill, currently independent hydrologist and former Water Services Director many years ago. To get specific to your question, the city has asked me to do a much more detailed analysis in terms of when the need will, that the city will, would want something like a new supply, whether it's this supply or some other alternative supply online. And we're actually, I've gone through the, the evaluation. And next month at the Water Commission in November, we're going to present the work done. So you could see the, the assumptions being made and, and could be tweaked if you want. But we have, the staff has, you know, we had to make some assumptions to give city staff an idea and then ultimately counsel and the public an idea of when a new supply will come online. And in particular, how resilient or redundant, that's a policy question that's going to ultimately land on you, come to you, for consideration, is how redundant and resilient do you want to be? Aaron mentioned, one of the graphs that, that's been presented here today, as we talked about catastrophic wildfire eliminates, since 80% of your water supply comes from the forest. So if we're looking at wildfires, how resilient do you want to be? And so that's the type of analysis that we've embedded in the planning for the, for the need. And so just a little teaser, next month's Water Commission meeting, and then I don't know if staff has that engaged to bring it forward to you or not, but we're going to have that conversation in next month.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then my last question would be, any, I'm assuming that along that 40-mile stretch or whatever, what's the probability that there are going to be other users or other people who may want to, want service or something? I know probably not right this minute, but.
Mayor, Counsel Member Harris.
Aaron, I'm happy to answer that if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead, Sterling. Thank you.
No. Probable. I'll put it that way.
Fantastic. Thank you. That was a great presentation. Mayor? We do have a public speaker request. Oh, oh, my goodness. Yes, it's right here in front of me. Thank you so much. I'm glad we have a city clerk to remind me to do these things. I'm now going to take public comment. And we have Ward Davis. And my apologies, Ward, I promise you, I would not have forsaken you.
No, I trust you on that. So I'm Ward Davis. I'm a Flagstaff resident, and I was on the Water Commission for a couple of terms, and I'm a member of the Flagstaff Water Group. Now, when we started all this and voted for Red Gap Ranch, there really wasn't any alternative. And the whole idea of the advanced water treatment on the reclaimed has really come up since then, and it's been partially studied. But it's, in increments, it's quite a bit cheaper. And so, you know, Aaron sort of alluded to it, but there's, there's ways of filling in the gap that pushes off the need for Red Gap Ranch. And the big advantage of the reclaimed water, turning it into potable, is that it can be done in small increments that you can pay for. So you get, you know, maybe five to 10 years' worth, and you pay for it. And then you do another one, five or 10 years for, and you pay for it. And Brad's, the studies that Brad pushed for us and got it done, used three steps, you know, three periods like that. And so you can pay for it with rates and things like that, you don't end up with a huge price tag. At the time we did all this, there were no regulations. The regulations and the, for advanced treatment are now in place. That's new. The technologies are getting better, you know? And as Flagstaff grows and our water use grows, the reclaim grows. So when we did the studies, even almost 10 years ago, you know, we, we did the economics too, trying to understand how everything fit together. And it did show that although the reclaimed doesn't have as many acre feet ultimately, it pays for itself in the increments better and, and costs less for the water than having to do all the money upfront with Red Gap Ranch. So it just, we're, we're at a point where this is finally a point where we understand Red Gap Ranch. So now it's time to, you know, bring up, bring together the studies on the advanced water treatment and figure out where we are on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward. I've got a question for you. So when you talk about the study that's been done, city, this was not done by city staff?
No, Corolla? Yeah. This is Brad's baby.
Mayor and council, so my past is catching up with me that I'm here. So we did two studies back, the city had done, with Corolla Engineers in 2017, that looked at all of the city's water supplies except for Red Gap, because the city had hired Jacobs to do that. And we also did a second study after that, Brown and Caldwell in 2018, was to look at what type of footprint would it take to put a direct potable reuse or advanced treatment system in at Rio de Flag and at Wildcat Hill? So those are, I believe, the two that Ward was, that Ward was referring to. That, because those helped give the city some information on, on the DPR side or the indirect potable use side.
So those were paid for and ordered by the city?
Correct. And we hired two separate engineering firms to do those, and those, those are, those reports are available to you.
Okay. And then how have those studies informed what we're looking at today?
I'll let staff answer that question.
Okay.
Do you have an answer to that?
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we have looked at them. As we got more, you know, we had some numbers on Red Gap Ranch, we had these two studies done, we're trying to figure out, you know, where do you go from here? How fast? We, we were, we've been doing those projections of when you needed it for a long, long time. We got the water conservation money for doing that. It's been very helpful. And we continued. And so we're making those calculations. I do it like other people do it. And you figure out what could possibly be done using the data you have. And it was a little on the sparse side on both sides, right? The DPR numbers were, you know, admittedly not perfect. We were, back in the day, there were no regulations. So we did what we could with it. And it, if you do the math, it showed the Red Gap Ranch was quite a bit more expensive because you had to put the money upfront. And the other ones, you can spend it over some time. Even though it doesn't go so far, it doesn't necessarily solve all the problems. But it's certainly a really important stopgap.
Thank you, Ward. And, and so, Aaron, I would ask you how it informed where we are today and what steps we're, we're taking in terms of DPR?
Mayor, the, the first study that Brad alluded to, the Corolla Study of Alternatives, that was a conceptual study. To my knowledge, the city had not conducted an analysis of our indirect potable reuse options and with direct potable reuse options, where do we do the advanced treatment? Do we do the advanced treatment at Wildcat Plant and Rio Plant or at Lake Mary Plant? And it, it helped us conceptualize how IPR or DPR could work in our system. So that was how, I would say, that conceptual report is helping us. That opened up so many other opportunities that we really hadn't been thinking about. It also presented, how would we operate IPR and DPR in our system? We realized that we might use advanced treatment. If we're advanced treating water for drinking, that might be our base supply every, every day. And then we build our, our Upper Lake Mary water on top of that, and then groundwater on top of that, sort of thinking about how we run these systems. And, and then we had the costs for these projects that Ward alluded to. We started with, okay, we start with a six MGD plant, and then we phase in, a second phase, we, we make it a 10 MGD plant. What point in time might that happen? So really, these studies, sometimes people say, well, they sit on the shelf, but they're, it's like this iterative process we go through in evaluating and learning as we go. The second study that Brad alluded to was the inside the fence, is, does the footprint exist? We learned it does exist to do DPR at the two facilities. It forced us to think about if we need RO in the process versus this other process AOP, these other acronyms, if we need RO, where can we dispose of the brine? So we looked at those options. Because we know we have the footprint. Because we know we have the footprint to do it, it's a very different engineering study than a Red Gap Ranch water pipeline study. The two are very different analyses, I feel. And so even though we're not doing a big study like what was just presented on IPR, DPR, it's really not the point in time yet to do that until we have the regulations in place, until we determine as a community what our policies are on how clean is clean? Because we can be doing IPR today with the Class A plus effluent. If we want to take it a step further, why do we want to clean the water? What do we want to clean? And then we're regulating ourselves, because there are no regulations beyond what there is today. So these are kind of iterative points in time, I feel, and, and we're learning a lot, and it helps with discussion.
So they're still part of the discussion and part of our planning?
Yes. And now, we have these studies that can feed into this appraisal process where the Bureau will look at all the work we've done, what fits their criteria for the feasibility part of their work, which is more the engineering analyses and such, those comparisons. So these studies will absolutely check the boxes in some form. That we'll learn about more in the appraisal study.
Thank you. Now, we have concluded, and you are free to go. But council is not free to go, because item number five is a fair item, discussion and possible direction regarding vice mayor selection process. And we have two council members who have requested this in the past. We have Councilmember Matthews and Vice Mayor. So we can hear from both of you. One of you?
I can go. The motivation behind when I brought this up several months ago was in my self-realization that when I was running for city council, which I think, I talked to so many people that are running for city council, and everybody aspires, almost everybody aspires to be the vice mayor. I didn't know what I didn't know. And many people after I was elected and appointed on council, the common question is, are you still drinking from the fire hose? Because that's what it feels like, when you, you think you know everything and what goes on. But that first year, you're really drinking from the fire hose, and really learning about city governance and just our duties and our roles. And so I, that's my initial motivation for doing that. Since then, I have had the pleasure of speaking to other town and city councils and asking them the question, and in their cities and towns, they do a different selection where it's the fellow council members. And just to quote, one of them, just the other day, he told me, he said, well, it would never be a new person because it's just too much to learn upfront. And I know that, I think Councilmember Sweet was a first appointee, first time on council, and I know she did fine, but she may want to speak to that in a little bit on how, looking back, how difficult that was. But he said, you know, we rotate, but, and it's not just about representing the city when we're out in different events, but also representing the mayor. Because one of the main roles of a vice mayor is to substitute for the mayor upon their absence or maybe double booked and stuff. And so, just unsolicited, this is how it was explained to me, that that vice mayor needs to be comfortable in public speaking and be representation of the mayor, so that the mayor has that comfort level when he or she is asked, the vice mayor to fill in or substitute for them, that they're going to present the same way they would. And when I read, I looked up on the duties in our charter for the mayor, it says, the mayor shall be the chairperson of the council and preside over its meetings. The mayor may make and second motions and shall have a voice and a vote in all its proceedings. The mayor shall recognize as head, shall be recognized as head of the city government for all ceremonial purposes and by, I didn't know this one, and by the governor for purposes of martial law. You ready? Right? And shall have exec, and shall have executive but not regular administrative duties. And so vice mayor, you know, here in Flagstaff, our mayor runs for that office specifically. And the rest of us, the six of us, run for the same position of city council member. The voters don't vote for also vice mayor. It just defaults currently to the one who got the most votes. I remember Councilmember McCarthy said that it used to be the way I just described, but for reasons, and I'd like you just to quickly explain why it went to where it is now, which I think it's time for us to correct that back if everybody else agrees. So go ahead.
Do you want me to do this now, or let the vice mayor speak first? Either way.
I was going to ask you to do the same thing. Give us a little history lesson.
Okay. History 102, or 101. The system that this council used to have was that the person that got the most votes in the election two years before would become vice mayor. That way, we're recognizing the person with the highest vote, but they have two years of experience under their belt, so to speak. And I think that's the idea that you're suggesting. That is the way that we used to do it. But the council did not want a certain man, who incidentally was a Native American, I don't know if there was prejudice involved or not, but the city council did not want that man who should have gotten the, the vice mayor's position to be the vice mayor. So they changed the rules to the, the way that we've been doing it since I've been on council. So that's kind of the history of it. Am I making this clear? It's clear in my mind, but I don't know if it's clear in your minds. So I strongly suggest that we change it back to the way it used to be. Now, I don't, I wanted to talk about how we would accomplish this in a transition from the current system back to the old system, but maybe I'll let the other speakers speak, and then I'll come back to my ideas on transitioning.
We'll go back and forth here. First of all, I, this wasn't on my radar. It's not something I was particularly thinking about. We did talk about it a couple of years ago, and I think that effort just kind of fizzled because there were too many ideas of how to change it. I do appreciate you bringing it forward. I, I think it makes sense, and I agree with Councilmember McCarthy, that we should, that I strongly feel we should make that change. I think it would be an easy one. I have the language here from the agenda. All we would need to do on section 6.03 is add, add the word previous into the clause, the candidate with the highest number of votes in the most recent previous general election shall be appointed vice mayor. I think that makes sense for a couple of reasons. It keeps in place the, the construct that, that role goes to, is somewhat controlled by the electorate, the voters. I think that's important, and I can go into that just a little bit. In, in general, you know, I'm vice mayor right now, and I understand that this conversation has some ramifications around that. But I still think it might be the, the right timing to do all of this. It doesn't have to be, but why wait? The role of vice mayor is, it's very specific, it's very limited, and it's mostly theoretical. I've definitely had some opportunities and had the privilege to represent the mayor in, in certain cases and, and to preside over a meeting a time or two. But mostly what we're talking about is a succession plan for who takes over in case there's, something happens with the mayor. And so it makes sense that the voters, the electorate would have some say in, in who that person is. And it makes sense that that person would have a little bit of experience and understanding of city government underneath them before stepping into that, that role. I think it's worked fine over the past several cycles that the newer person does find, becoming vice mayor. But that's not necessary. That's not, that's not something you can rely on. It requires a highly functioning council, which is what we've benefited from over the course of time since I've been on council. So it's just a consideration. The other thing I thought was, oh, shoot, here, here I go again when I lose my train of thought and then, and then spin my wheels. There, there was another comment I wanted to make there. I'll let the conversation proceed a little bit, maybe we'll come back.
Councilmember Matthews?
So, well, I'd also like to question Councilmember Sweet on her experience with being, because she did it, I'm assuming successfully, being vice mayor, being newly elected, but just her feedback and now looking back on that experience and what you know today, do you have comments on that?
If I could clarify, she stepped in as vice mayor because I resigned to run for mayor. I was vice mayor.
Yes. Thank you for correcting that.
Yeah.
So that was a real shocker then for her to step in. I forgot that. Apologies.
Do you want me to comment? So I was somewhat new on council, and I was vice mayor for Mayor Deasy. And it was a challenge, because I was learning my role and trying to be the vice mayor that Mayor Deasy deserved. And it was drinking from the fire hose, as you like to say. And I don't know if it was really the most effective way to do things. Looking back, I think I did a great job, to be honest with you, but it was a lot of work, and I had to really learn, learn quick. And I don't know if everyone really has that desire to even want to do that. So I like where this conversation's going. I do have a couple of thoughts, and one of them, I'm wondering why we focus on two years and we don't do this on a yearly basis. And the reason why I say that, is I remember we were talking about this, and we had some council, or no, some people in the council chambers talking about how they don't want to lose out on the opportunity, if and when, to be vice mayor. And I've been thinking a lot about that, and I know for the county board of supervisors, they change every nine to 12 months. And I know this might be a little bit more work, and I don't know how it would work with elections and all of that, but to give everyone that opportunity, I think changing it to a yearly basis might be a good thought for us to resonate on. I would like to see everyone have the opportunity to do it. I mean, being vice mayor is, at least for me, it was difficult and challenging, but an honor. And I took it very seriously, and I learned a lot in a very short amount of time. So I would like to see everyone have that chance if, if they would like to take it. Thanks.
Councilmember Harris?
So when I saw this on the agenda, I sent a note to Stacy and asked her if there was a job description for the vice mayor, and she told me no. Kinda, yeah. And so if we're going to do something different and change it, and it's, either way, it's fine with me, I don't particularly, I'm not wed to anything, I think there should be a job description for the vice mayor, so that that person knows exactly what's expected of them, rather than, you know, whatever. Because to be honest, I don't know what a vice mayor does, other than when Austin has ran the meeting once, or once, maybe twice, when you weren't here for whatever reason.
That's it? That's all it is?
Yeah. You know, so I don't know if they have particular roles that they, you know, do stuff for the mayor, or if there's anything that they do on a regular basis, if, I think there's, would, would be some, some benefit to having someone who can be, you know, the, the mayor gets invited to a whole bunch of stuff. And if that person, the mayor, isn't able to go, then the city's not kind of represented in an official way. I mean, sometimes I'm at an event, Miranda's at an event, council member house, but we don't really have any official thing from the, from the.
The vice mayor. So if I can't go, I ask the vice mayor to go.
Okay. And if that vice mayor can't go, then.
If it's an official thing, we'll find another council member who can go.
Because I know I've been at events, and none of us were there. That was, yeah, I was there. Yeah, yeah. No, no, that's how I know none of us were there, because I was there. So all I'm saying is that if, you know, that, that we should have, to make sure that someone is there to represent the city, because I have been at events, and, and no one was there except me, you know, so whatever.
All right. Councilmember Sweet?
And since we are talking on this, I do appreciate that comment, and when I was vice mayor, it would have been very helpful for me to know what role I was playing. I think it is more than just running a meeting, to be honest. I think it's stepping in, being the voice of the mayor when they can't attend, and really representing the city, and how do you do that? And maybe Mayor Daggett has a different vision than Mayor Deasy did, and maybe it's the mayor that kind of says, okay, for my vice mayor, here's what I expect and would like to see happen. But having that discussion and having it kind of an official description, I think, would be helpful. So thank you for bringing that up.
Vice mayor?
Thank you. Great conversation so far, and I did remember what I was forgetting earlier. But to sort of flow with the conversation so far, you know, the, my experience over the past six years is that the vice mayor's role, it isn't locked down, it's not defined on, on paper officially, and it's more at the discretion of the mayor. And I could argue both sides of why that's a good idea or less effective. I, I too have struggled with exactly what my role is as vice mayor. So having a little bit more of a definition, not only for the vice mayor, but also a, a better understanding for the, for the mayor of how to use the vice mayor. I think there's a nice role for precedent and norm setting for that to happen, but maybe a bit more of a definition makes a little bit of sense. And so the other thing that I wanted to go back to was, I, I like the formulation that it would be, that it would go to the highest vote getter in the most recent previous election. When I, when I think about the selection process being left to the seven members of council, three of whom, maybe even the mayor, so a fourth, being brand new, it gives me, that gives me a lot of indigestion, and it really freaks me out. Because those, those relationships haven't been formed yet, those dynamics haven't been set, there's still going to be a lot of heat from the election that occurred, or there could be. Again, I, I think we're in an era right now where things are highly functional and we all get along well. We, we have to keep in mind that that might not always be the case, and that there could be a very strong opposite opinions represented at this dais. And I, I know in other municipalities, that dynamic can be very strained. And so having, having that role defined by the voters, I think, is, is critical, which kind of precludes that, that switching out on a yearly basis. But I do think that that, you know, this isn't the, the county board of supervisors who is picking the presider of the meetings. We, we have a methodology for that. That's the mayor. And I, I think it's, you know, if, if the highest vote getter happens to be somewhat in line with the, the mayor that was just elected, then the voter's will is kind of reinforced. If the highest vote getter is on a completely different wavelength than the mayor, then the electorate, the city is saying something there, that they want a bit more of a, you know, a check and balance and a, things to be canceled out. I think that takes care of it. Those. Those conversations happen at the ballot box. And that's just kind of my baseline feeling on this. It's wonderful to have all these conversations about, you know, what this could look like when we all basically get along and we all appreciate each other and respect each other. We have to be mindful of leaving a mess in a council's lap if they are all over the place in terms of their dynamic.
Can I just say something? I was gonna just remind us about what Councilmember McCarthy said, is that when they changed it, so four people at least got together and for whatever reason, they changed the process so that could happen again. I'm saying, you know, I mean, so whichever way we go is not going to ensure that four people don't do this again. You know what I'm saying? If that makes sense. And I don't know how to stop that, so.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I like what Councilmember Sweet said about, you know, giving other, more people opportunities. And that was communicated to me with the other towns and cities that have that type of system, that not everyone, I just spoke to a candidate yesterday that said, am I expected to go to all these ribbon cuttings and all these events and stuff? And I said, no, you, you know, you go to the ones that interest you or the ones that you can, you're expected to be, you know, somewhat active. But, so my point is that maybe not everyone will have a desire to be vice mayor. But, you know, just also looking at the other end of it, you know, so doing it on an annual basis gives more opportunity for the people to actually want to have that honor and role and are willing to put in the time and stuff. I understand and agree with what vice mayor's saying, that we have to look at a different scenario that could, the makeup in future councils could create an issue. And so we don't want to just replace something that's, you know, maybe problematic with a bigger problem. But, so I'm just kind of torn on that one. But I do like the rotation of every year. I think that's a good and fair, equitable way to do it. How then the council selects, is it just put in a hat and, name in a hat to say, well, these three people or these two people, you know, want to be vice mayor and we vote on that? I don't know. Or maybe other staff members get involved. But I do think change is necessary and I, you know, I think that with the vice mayor, and I like the fact of defining more expectations. And maybe that's written just by the mayor, when the mayor first is elected until they're not serving anymore as mayor, to say, these are my expectations of a vice mayor. Because the vice mayor is a supporting role of the mayor. And so maybe it's not something that goes into the, our charter, but everybody has different preferences. So maybe Mayor Daggett, you know, would want somebody to do X, Y, Z and, you know, go to all these events. And maybe another mayor wants to do more on their own. So I think defining it for the mayor is a good idea. But I hope we can come to a conclusion. And then there's the question of when do we implement this? So I just wanted to make those comments.
So if we alternated, then we couldn't do the top vote getter. So there's that. And if we do top vote getter and do it for two years, then what is the mechanism for making sure that it is a seasoned council member? And Councilmember House has a C.
Yeah, I've just been listening and thinking. If anybody knows the play A Reason in the Sun, there's a line in there where they say, never be afraid to just sit awhile and think. One of the things that keeps coming to my mind is with the process of it going to the person who just happened to get the most votes in the past election is, there's also always the opportunity that that person doesn't want to be vice mayor. They just ran a really good election, they have no interest. So I am very much open to looking at this process and seeing how we do this and create that opportunity and allow those seasoned voices that, you know, actually have that interest and are wanting to step into that sort of a role as we move towards defining it. I think that's an important process, but I do think that it's something that we have to really think through. And that's always been something that kind of sat a little off with me in terms of just how the vice mayor is selected. And this has nothing to do with anyone who has sat in that role, so vice mayor current, previous and previous. But just imagine if Vice Mayor Aslan had gotten the most votes and came forward and said, I don't want this. Like, this is not something that I ever envisioned or wanted. So I think that's just something else to take into consideration.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the decision in a year in the future, it's up to the council. It's not in code. So the council can change the ground rules whenever it wants to. If we had a person that two years before got the most votes and they don't want to do it, they can say, I pass and let the next person get it. So there's no reason we couldn't do that. The suggestion that I'm kind of standing behind is the, I guess what would be called the panultimate winner, which panultimate means before the last one. So I'm not so much in favor of a change every year, but, you know, if you want to do that, fine. I would suggest, so I think what I'd like to address right now is the transition. Assuming that we decide to make it the person that won, you know, two years before, and we may come back to the change it every year thing, but for the sake of discussion, how would we make that transition? My suggestion is, and I'll just use real names since we have a real situation, this vice mayor right here, he's the one that got the most votes two years ago. I mean, I'm assuming this is after our next election. So what I'd suggest is that he stays on for one more year. So that would give you three years as vice mayor. And then the person that comes in first place in the election two weeks from tonight, they would, they would get three years also. And then after that, the person will get two years based on the panultimate election. Does that make sense? Okay.
Vice mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. It's an interesting suggestion. What I want to address real quickly is, again, you know, this isn't, this isn't like the county board of supervisors where they don't have a mechanism for the public to choose who's presiding. That's something that they arrange amongst themselves. And then whoever takes over that position would just be another conversation that they have if something happens. The only real role of the vice mayor is a successional one, to take over in case something happens to the mayor. I think, I think we need to keep that in mind. I think that is the functional characteristic that we need to be deciding upon. And having that switch every year, I don't think that makes sense. I'm not sure the voters are going to like that. They want to know that they're getting what they pay for, so to speak. Maybe that's a, that's a bad, yeah. They want consistency and they want to feel like they have a say in the process. Strike my other comment, I didn't even think about it till afterwards, but no, that does not work. I agree. And the other roles are largely discretionary and I kind of like that. I think the mayor should have the, you know, that's one of the privileges the mayor has is rolling out their people the way they want to. I do think a little bit of definition makes sense so that people understand where they're starting from and where they're coming from. And that a vice mayor can't just be ignored by a mayor. I could see that happening at some point in a bad dynamic, so we don't want that either. So well-defined role, to a certain extent, is important, but also allowing the mayor to have a lot of discretion. For example, this mayor isn't always going to send me out to things and hasn't always. And sometimes I've been unavailable or I haven't wanted to do something. And so, you know, there's still five other people that she can choose from to fill in. And I think that having that play inherently involved in the system just makes sense and keeps things limber. So that's kind of where I'm thinking. I'm not sure what I think about your idea of two people serving three years. I think that gets us away from what I'm hearing at the table here a little bit, which is folks want to be able to, want that position to rotate more quickly than that. And I don't know how we write that into the policy, but we can keep talking about that. I do think the easiest thing to do is to simply insert the word "previous" into 6.03 and that takes care of things and that keeps voters happy and everything else.
Councilmember Matthews, then Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a thought that came up when the vice mayor was speaking. When I go out to ribbon cuttings or, you know, different events where they're having a groundbreaking or something, it's an honor and a privilege that the mayor shows up. And when the mayor can't show up, the vice mayor, but, I mean, not that we're not equally important, but I know that the recipients, they want to feel important. So I disagree that, I mean, sometimes we have to send others out, but I think that it's critical that, if at all possible, it needs to be always the mayor or if not, the vice mayor, just for our community. Bringing up that, yes, the current vice mayor got the most votes and so I don't want our decision tonight to, in any way, be interpreted that we made this, you know, favorable decision and just so happens that the vice mayor gets to keep his position for another year or two years. So I really want to find an alternative from that because I think that would just, just like when the last council voted on the pay increases, the people that were not in for reelection, you know, didn't get to receive that. So there was no, there was no way people would say, well, Jim just voted his own raise-in, you know, that he gets. So I think this kind of applies too. So maybe a hybrid of what Jim says, but we can't go back to two years ago because I think that would be really problematic. And I just want to put that out there. So I don't know what the solution is. I didn't get, from the people that I talked to at Flynn Brown, they didn't share any stories about, yeah, some years it's been really bad. It was always like, you know, we support each other. And I kind of think, and maybe this is a negative way to think this, but maybe some people that are a little, like to be agitators, might be on better behavior if they're like, man, I really want to be vice mayor next year, so I better not piss off everybody and be a jerk. Because then they won't vote for me, you know, or something. So there's that. But I think whatever we decide tonight, we make sure that we don't make the appearance that we are structuring something that just goes in favor of, you know, the current vice mayor or anything else to make us in a bad situation. So if we can find a formula to, how to correct this in the future so that it doesn't benefit anyone today, that might be...
Let me take other commenters, or do you have something?
It's directly related to that. I think I have a solution to that problem. If we want to avoid that problem, then we just ratify this change three weeks from now instead of two weeks from now. It's that simple.
Was it Councilmember Sweet and then Councilmember McCarthy? Councilmember Sweet then Councilmember McCarthy?
Mine's short because Councilmember Matthews did bring up my concerns. One, I was here when we voted in the raise and I didn't get the raise. And we are close to election time, there are people that are running an election wanting to be vice mayor. So if we can ratify this and make it an easy solution, then I think that's a good, good idea.
McCarthy?
Well, I voted for the raise, but I didn't get it. Miranda and I are the lowest paid members at the DAAS. If we just implement this, you know, after the election, then it affects you to be vice mayor for four years. I don't know if that's appropriate. Nothing personal.
No, I'm trying to. No. In three weeks, it would be the top vote getter.
Yeah, if I could clarify, it would be whoever the top voter, vote getter is on November 5th. However, that top vote getter would then be in for four years. Just want to make sure you all understand what's being discussed here.
Okay. I, you're right.
Because if the change is made after November 5th, then it's going to be to whoever it was two years previously when you get to the next election. And that's going to be the same person that it is this year.
Someone's going to get that extra shift.
Okay, that might work, actually, because that way, no one on this council will be getting the pay raise, so to speak. Well, I'm not too worried about that because she's got a couple of years of experience.
Do we go back to what you suggested on the three years phase into it?
I could go either way. I thought that would be sort of a soft transition as opposed to giving some person four years as vice mayor. And I'll just real quickly mention that, you know, I think it mostly is about succession. Like, if the mayor can't make a meeting, then the vice mayor runs the meeting. There's a conference in Tucson in a week and a half and the mayor was going to go and speak on a panel and then she couldn't go. So staff asked me if I would go and I said, sure, I'll go. So it was all done very informally, but we make it work. Actually, I decided not to go. Yeah, but then I, when they asked me to be on the panel, I said, okay, I'll go.
Vice mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, just to make a comment, you know, it's an honor and a privilege to serve as vice mayor. It's an honor and a privilege to be your vice mayor, Mayor Daggett. But honestly, like, just to say it out loud, I am happy to pass this role along. I don't have to stay in this position. I could, I would enjoy doing that, but it's certainly not something that I'm, it's not a hill I'm going to die on and it's not something that I originally asked for or wanted. I really, I don't think there's an issue of perception of just keeping me on. I think it makes sense. I have six years of experience on council. So just based on that, I don't want to get too far into advocating for myself because that sort of speaks against what I'm really saying, which is, you know, I could take it or leave it, which is kind of a crass way to put it, but I just want, I just want that to be perfectly clear.
So essentially, we all would like to have someone who has some experience on council step into the vice mayor role. And what we're trying to figure out is how that happens. And does staff, I don't know.
They're like, we're not touching that.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
I don't know how this would work, but, it might be more problematic, but I'll say it anyway. So why not select from the people who are un-counseled that have two years' experience? With, you know, like, when we... With, you know, like, when we get back, or when the council, whenever. And so all those folks that have two years of experience on council, throw their hat, name in the hat, or vote, you know, out of those people who might want to be, I don't know. I'm just trying to throw out other options. I don't know if that would work or not.
McCarthy.
The problem with that is that you're, the voters aren't having any input. Whereas Mr. Asland pointed out, it's good to give the person that got the most votes a heads-up, so to speak, on being the vice mayor because those, that's the person that the voters like the best.
And I'll say on the mic what I just said. I don't like that because I think it puts the brand-new council members in a very awkward position. Yeah, they have to choose between people. It's just, it invites factions, it invites hard feelings. I think we can do better.
Then why not just leave it the way it is? I happen to think that most people, most people that are running for council have some level of expertise where they can learn, they can learn how to run a meeting if they have to. They can learn some of the other things that they might have to do. It may not be the best, you know, solution, but I think that it's, you happen to have experience when you came on as vice mayor, right?
I did, because I already served a full term.
Yeah, yeah, as a councilperson. And then you stepped in, Miranda, right? Because mayor stepped out or whatever. So, I don't know.
Just to point out, staff isn't involved in this, but your mayor stepped in as the person that was elected fresh, no experience on council, as the vice mayor.
Although I had been involved in city politics for 20 years, but yes.
And so most people, I don't know.
Sorry, Mayor, I have a C in Q in the chat.
Yes, my apologies, Councilmember House.
Sorry, Councilmember McCarthy, I'm going to call a point of privilege there. I'm just wondering, first of all, I kind of am in agreement with Councilmember Harris of leaning towards leaving it for now. But the other question that I have is, I keep going back to Councilmember Matthews having spoken to other cities. And I'm wondering if we don't just look at how this is typically done in similar-sized cities throughout the state. I know that's a bit of legwork for someone or some parts of the team, but I'm wondering if we're not also assuming some things in terms of how this vote happens. For example, I don't know that I would necessarily assume that just because someone got the most votes in the election for council member, that meant that the city populace wanted them to be vice mayor. I don't know that that, that's never gone through my mind when I'm voting, is I'm voting for this person in hopes that they become vice mayor. So I'd just be curious to see how this happens elsewhere and take that into consideration as well in a future conversation on this.
I think we might be the only ones who even think about it. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. So I do appreciate this conversation. And, you know, being vice mayor with little to no experience can happen. And we've watched it happen. And we are very close to an election. And I just, I don't know if it's the most appropriate time to try and do this. So I like the idea of maybe looking at Councilmember Matthews and who, what other cities, and how are they doing it? And I don't want to not make a decision tonight. But I am feeling like I'm kind of on the fence of just saying, let's leave it for right now because we're two weeks away from.
Councilmember McCarthy, and then Councilmember Matthews.
Well, I think we've pretty much beat this to death. I support changing it in the ways that I already said. And I think everybody understands where I'm coming from. I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, you know, I am interested in this. This is why I brought it up far in advance of the primaries because I didn't want us to end up having this discussion now. And so I think that it's wise for us to put this on an agenda with the new council. And I will take it upon myself to survey the other similar towns and cities on, like, the ones that I spoke to at Flynn Brown. I didn't ask them, well, exactly how do you vote? Or is it just a raise of hands, and who else? And is there any criteria? So I can get clarity on that and share it. And then I think that because we've put this out and spoke about it in public, then when we bring it back after the elections, there won't be any, you know, doubt or suspicions that we're trying to, because that was, that's why I wanted to talk about it back in February or March, whenever I brought it up. And now it is, I think, too close to the elections. And, you know, I don't think we'll, I think we'll just get people upset for no reason. So I'm willing to table it for right now and get some more information and wait for the elections and then go from there.
Councilmember Harris.
So whoever is collecting whatever information people are collecting, it would be nice to know if the council, whatever councils you survey, if they have made up their own process or if there's something in their constitution or their charter that says something about how things are done. Yeah, so make sure that that's included.
Mayor, I'll just note that this is exactly what happened last time. Conversation, there was a recognition that the system should maybe be changed a little bit, and then that things just sort of fizzled in a circular fashion and died. And I think that's what will happen next time, too. I don't, I don't think this is something we should waste off on a new council.
Quick comment. Just for the record, I wrote this up years ago. So this is not a new issue. The other thing is, I think we should do it now because it's like, if we're going to do it, do it.
Mayor, if I may, you've got kind of an.
Yes, I'd love it.
You've got kind of an interesting situation here where it takes three people to move a fair forward on three members of council. There are four that have indicated, at least from what I've heard, that say they probably just want to leave it where it's at right now. But that still leaves, oh, you're, oh, we're at the four-stage, never mind. Thank you, I appreciate her correcting me on that. Thank goodness for our city clerk.
It's about time you get corrected.
I'm always willing to be corrected.
Well, I'm going to take public comment, and then I'll come back to council. So gather your thoughts, please. Nadine Hart.
Hi, councilmembers. So I've been listening, and what, I am troubled as a voter and a resident that we just, by default, by popular vote, get the job. I would like to know what your attendance rating is, what your job performance is like. Because I do expect that it's not just a mere title that the vice mayor has, but I expect a lot more effort put into the job. I want to see that you're appearing at things that you don't want to go to. Because we need to go to all things possible as a representative. And who better to know what your job performance is other than the people you serve with to make that decision? So I would like more input from city council for who is best up for the job and the task at hand because you guys work with each other on difficult things all the time. But just winning by default's kind of, that doesn't do anything. Anything can happen with an election, anything. We have a lot of writing candidates. That doesn't mean that we're getting the best person for the job. But I think you guys already know who might be the best candidate.
Thank you. Sure.
My response to that is, this decision is made at the first meeting after the new council is seated. So at that point, we don't really know each other.
Well, that goes back to people having experience. Wouldn't be, except for the newly-elected, wouldn't know those other people. You're right.
We have another public commenter, Dennis Givens.
I just want to say, let the voters speak. Thank you.
Okay, so what's on the table is Change It Tonight. And of Change It Tonight, there is one more year for current vice mayor, and then three years for the next vice mayor. Or change it after the next election, and then there would be four years for the next vice mayor. Or table it and bring back more information about how other cities do it, or leave it as it is. Yes.
But we can't change anything tonight, correct? I thought we were at a work session.
It would be ratified at a later meeting, but that could be done before the election.
Mayor and council, this is actually something that is codified in your rules of procedure. So based on the direction that you give tonight, we can bring back that, those rules of procedure for change as early as next week. So it could definitely be done in advance of the election.
And I know you spoke in it, spoke to it in terms of ratification vice mayor, but it really is a separate agenda item on amending your rules of procedure, just like she said.
Okay. So we have two expressed interest for, for changing it tonight. And I'm unclear about three years or four years. And I also don't want to say that, because I don't know that I heard from everyone else, but I just know that I have two that talked about doing it tonight. And then one for research. And then I know there were a couple for leave it as is. So who says change it tonight, three years, meaning current vice mayor has one more year, and then the next vice mayor has two years, and then it will be two year, I mean, has three years, and then it will be two years after that? Or change it tonight, and the next vice mayor will have four years? You said three years.
Mayor, I think the basic decision is change it or don't change it. That makes it a simple one-two decision. And then after we do that, then we can make a decision about, oh, wait, do we want more research? Or do we want more discussion, or do it next year? Or in my case, do we three years, or do we do four years, or whatever? That's my suggestion, but you're running the meeting.
Really? I know, I know. Okay, um, yeah, I like that idea. So, so leave it or don't leave it. So we have don't leave it, and I think there's a third don't leave it. It is getting complicated. Okay. Leave it, leave it, leave it, leave it. I'm going to go leave it.
I would say leave it to Beaver.
Okay, well, that was easy. I do appreciate the, I appreciate the discussion. And moving right along. So open call to the public. Nadine Hart.
Hi again. So I am here speaking about the recent Housing Board Commission meeting. And I was really upset because I've been trying for months to get a meeting with the Flagstaff Housing Authority, for months after my own evaluation, to see if we could extend those inspections to every two years, for months to see if we can get landlords assistance with affordable maintenance so we can retain that housing for our housing choice voucher holders. And I'm getting nowhere. I thought at least one of those things would come onto the agenda. But we spent time on the Flagstaff Regional Plan for 45 minutes of an hour I had allotted that we had scheduled for Sarah to name off the cast of 100 people who helped her to start off. Nothing of it was to the point of how it helps us with our housing choice voucher. And we, when we got, started to talk about new HUD implementations for what they want to do, I had 15 minutes left. And it was made very clear that nothing I keep bringing up that is important to those of us who hold vouchers and who hold our breath on those holidays, are we going to have a home next year? None of that's getting spoken to by Sarah Dar. And I don't understand this. I don't understand the high turnover in the housing authority. I don't know if her employees are still joking about getting us kicked out. I don't know what she's doing to ensure that belligerent or unprofessional individuals are not inspecting our property after being abusive in our homes. Why, are they still coming? I'm concerned at the lack of transparency between the voucher holders and the housing authority. Every time I ask, who is speaking to them? Oh, it's the case managers. Well, if it's the case managers, where are their feedback? It dies with them. There's no transparency. So if we don't want me on the commission, let's eliminate that position or add to that position. The whole reason I am there is to bring these issues to that board, and they're not being heard. I'm not just a resident for no reason. Why don't we have maybe a representative from Siler Home or Brennan Home? I mean, I know it's hard, poor people work. Lord knows, I had an hour, and everybody got to hear how poorly-run this meeting was, and it was kind of embarrassing. So I don't know what can be done to bring a little more structure or to bring a little more voice because I have tried everything I can possibly do to get through to this organization that these things matter to all of us. So I'm just hoping today that you guys can help me and the many other voucher holders who are fighting this battle to keep Flagstaff our home. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadine. Okay, number seven, informational items. Two from mayor, council, and city manager, future agenda item requests. Councilmember Matthews.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Nothing.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'll just quickly summarize my concluding thoughts for the last conversation. I think that's fine that we're leaving it. It's been working. This conversation fell apart last time, and the status quo wasn't a problem, so I think that's great. All the candidates that are going to be in the upcoming election would make a great vice mayor. So I think leaving well enough alone is always viable advice.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, with regard to it, I kind of agree. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. So, and it's not broke so bad that it needs to be fixed. I do actually have a couple of things here. We had a woman come up to the podium at Public Participation at the start of this meeting tonight. And it was kind of hard to see the picture that she showed, but I believe she emailed it to all of us. It was a picture of a dumpster with a whole pile of trash right in front of the dumpster. She called me and told me, she says, the dumpster was actually empty. And they put the trash cans, the trash bags in front of the dumpster instead of putting it in the dumpster. But the real problem is, and I would either like to have a fair on this or get a presentation from council or from staff. from council, or from staff, the city spent a lot of money, and the neighborhood raised a lot of additional money to put a mural, and this is, you know, just off San Francisco Street, South San Francisco Street, and then put the dumpster right in back of, right in front of Coral Evans' face. It's like a monument to the ex-Mayor. So during the presentation, or the, the making of the mural, the trash can was moved out to the street, and I would say that it could still be there. I would like to have a discussion about why that dumpster is right in front of that wonderful mural. Okay, any questions on that? If not, I'll move on. No questions, okay. The other thing is, we got a letter, at least I did, from Habitat Harmony, and they're asking us to revisit something that sort of got addressed at one point, but it wasn't ever resolved. This is about prairie dogs, and the idea is that if there's prairie dog colonies, rather than just going in and bulldozing them over, that we move them to a new site. And so I would ask for a fair item on that discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilmember House.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing from me? City Manager has got nothing. So let's-